We have a few missing people and they are on their way or something. Anyway, we're gonna start. So, let's take a look at our calendar. Let's see, does anyone have any special announcements? Yeah, go ahead.
I would just remind the community that on Saturday from 3:00 to 5:00 at the Brookline High School, we will be having the Brookline's Pan Asian Lunar New Year Festival. It's free and available to all members of the public. We encourage everyone to come and have a great time. There'll be performances and food and crafts and it's a family-friendly event, so please come.
And anything else anyone wants to highlight? Just lots of committee meetings, subcommittee meetings. Okay. Consent agenda? Do I have a motion to move the consent agenda? Barbara, second. Susan, thank you. Any conversations, discussions, questions? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go for a vote. All in favor? Opposed? No, it's unanimous. Okay. We're starting with public comment. These are not the comments on the budget. These are just our general public comments, so Robin will check to see if we have anybody. No. Okay. Seeing no names signed up, I think we'll move on. Does somebody want? Did you want to speak?
So, I think if somebody's recording, they should just say their name and that they're recording the meeting. That's all.
Would you like, does he need to come to the mic to do that? You probably need to. Okay. Does he get to tell us who he's with? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay. A student report. Levi.
Okay. So, today legislature broke out into a variety of subcommittees to address several issues. The communications subcommittee met to address transparency and using media to connect with the student body. The SAGMoR has agreed to give us a little bit of space in every issue to communicate to the student body, and today the subcommittee crafted their statement to send to the SAGMoR. There was a bit of debate in the group about which details to include, especially regarding the headphone issue. The subcommittee agreed that it was necessary to tread carefully because the student body is so passionate about the headphone policy in general. However, they still wanted to communicate the passion on both sides at the legislature meeting. Another subcommittee met to discuss the possible changes to the homework deadline bill. The bill again wants to ensure that homework cannot be due before the next class meeting time, and several teachers had objections. Members of the math department objected to the restrictive nature of the bill. They said it would slow down the progress of long-term projects and make it more difficult to get through curriculum. And then, members of the English department also worked to clarify the bill. They believed that the current wording implied that papers could not be due earlier than implied that papers would have to be due earlier than necessary, and that would be unfair to the students. The policy subcommittee worked to address an unofficial guidance policy that restricted senior attendant signups, and the bill was finalized. Under this new bill, seniors are now allowed to essentially sign up for a new sport. In the past, guidance counselors have said you cannot sign up for a new sport your senior year, and hopefully this new bill will clear that up. And then, finally, a group met to discuss absences on field trips. There's been a bit of confusion regarding field trips and is it signed out? Can teachers give absences? And hopefully this bill will clear it up and make sure that students still have the responsibility to make up work, of course, if they are missing a field trip, but an absence will not go on their transcript. And then, aside from, I guess, just legislature, there have been a variety of events in the schools general. The French exchange left today, and everyone seems very excited to go. And then, also, several clubs have been working on a sort of graduate green initiative at Brookline High School. It's been the Environmental Action Club, the Foods Justice Club, among others. And today, they started their first round of advisory lessons. So, a variety of student representatives throughout the school will be giving presentations on sustainability, on recycling properly, and food justice in general. And these sort of lessons are 10 to 15 minutes, and they'll go into each of the junior advisories. And it's all part of a larger initiative to ensure that students graduate Brookline High School with education and environmentalism and understand that the impacts they make, sort of the simple choices they make about maybe throwing a full coffee cup into a cycling bin can have big impacts on a broader scale. And I think that's it.
Thank you.
Could you just clarify one thing for me? When you were talking about the absences and the field trip? Were those absences from not going on a field trip? So, absences from a field trip or absences from class to go on a field trip?
So, at Brookline High, we have the policy for field trips is you have, of course, have to have parent permission, and then also you need sort of have it signed out with each of your teachers. And then, the idea is that, I believe, the teacher who runs the field trip will get the students signed out from their classes. However, there's sometimes a bit of a miscommunication. And I guess this bill is just trying to clarify that even if there is a miscommunication, there is a clear path for students to get that absence reversed, because if the teacher conducting the field trip perhaps makes a mistake, students have struggled to go to guidance, get that absence reversed, and clear up everything with their teacher. And I believe that's the intention of the bill. Not going on field trips is, I guess, just skipping school as well, and that, of course, is non-excused.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you very much.
Our first presentation on current issues is a final financial report.
It's Mary Ellen Norman. We lost her. Are you up with her?
No, she shot her.
Oh, she shot her. Here she is.
She's right here.
So, I'm doing an update on where we are with our budget process and want to clarify for committee members kind of where we are, whether it's part of our normal process in our process in that we have not and we will be having February 14th, the town school partnership meeting, which will give us additional, will give us our final revenue allocation for town meeting. And so, and as true to form, budget requests and commitments that we need to meet and have change on a week-to-week basis. So, I'm gonna be giving you an update for, from Ben Lummis's last presentation to this presentation. And I'll have that on the projector as soon as I have it loaded here.
Mary Ellen, well, that's loading. Do you have any particular thoughts on the FY '19 final financial report?
So, the '19 financial report was submitted. There's an amendment that I will be producing because the, it takes a little bit of extra work to do the, oh, come on. Little extra work to do the allocation of staffing by building, and we're in the process of fixing all of that in the chart of accounts. And so, I'll be putting an amendment in, and once that's in, I'll have the school committee chair will sign it. But what that report shows is that feeds a lot of the budget and financial data that's on the DESCEE website. So, it's the, they do a calculation on average teacher costs based on the FTEs reported through our SIMS data and EPIM's data, as well as what we report annually in our budget, end-of-year report, financial report. And also, it reports all funds, and it also reports the town-related expenditures in support of schools as well. So, that information is all finalized and available. So, with that, where we sort of ended our last presentation was we were showing that through some, the ebbs and flows of our budget process, we had on this slide, which was in your packet last week, I'm not sure this whole slide actually showed up in the packet last week because of some progression or animation that Ben was using, but this slide is kind of where we were. We ended last week with the FY '20 special town meeting appropriation process, what the FY '21 override plan was back in April of 2018, where we were in December of planning the '21 budget, and kind of where we were projecting a deficit, which had to do with anticipating increased special ed expenses and tuitions and transportation, anticipating increases in our personnel and salary lines, and replacing and returning some of the supplies and materials cuts that we had to make to balance the FY '20 budget that was voted. And so, when we went through into the next column, which is now outlined in yellow, where we got down to roughly about 2.8, our salary number was getting more refined, our special ed tuition and transportation number was becoming more defined in early January. And then, the end of January, we landed on a final personnel amount projection, final projections for transportation, special ed transportation and special ed tuitions. And we retained the level funding of the supplies, other utilities and capital. We kind of combined all of those, and we level funded those to what, how they're allocated currently in the FY '20 budget. And then, there were transfers to the municipal departments for the additional square footage and support we need around Two Clark Road. And so, we had, we were working with a deficit, a projected deficit of 251,000 at that point without making, other than removing items from, planned items from the override, which consisted of the additional FTEs, teaching FTEs that were planned, which were 15, and an administrator of .8, and maintaining FY '20 cuts from the override. Those were the only changes. They were all planned expenses. No existing positions or existing expenses were reduced at that point. So, currently, tonight, I'm sharing with you sort of information that arrived in the last two days of this week of how our budget changes and our obligations change. So, I'm gonna share with you that, which doesn't necessarily make our situation any better, but it provides you with some, where we were heading. So, we have requests from, we were working at one point with a $627,000 request from the building, public building division to support staffing and maintenance and repair of our buildings. The public buildings division gets a normal kind of steps and increase, collective bargaining increase, as well as 2.5% on their expense lines. Roughly, that turned into, it's about a $139,000 increase for that budget through the town. But the department head is requesting up to four HVAC staffing members and about 400,000 in maintenance. And so, the capital subcommittee next week is going to have additional discussions with Charlie and come back to the school committee with a recommendation on the need and priority for those positions. Also, at the time, we were also having conversations with recreation about intramurals, and that is not something we're going to be transitioning for '21. I think we're in agreement. We're looking at planning. There are a couple structural types of things that need to occur, and really, some really good planning needs to happen before we can make that transition and for recreation to take that on, or if it makes sense for recreation to take on our intramural program. The, in the, at the top of the list, to the next column, we have 138,000 in anticipated shortfall in our grants going into next year. So, we're assuming that our grants are level funded. However, what I learned, we learned yesterday is that due to our declining poverty level for, on the town census, not our student enrollment, but our town census that is from 2018, there, we have a declining poverty, we're about 5%, that we are looking at losing, potentially losing about $242,000 from our Title I grant. So, we are in the process of discussing with teaching and learning around how does that, if we have that decline, what does that have, what impact does that have on our schools? Do we have services we no longer need to provide? Are those services ones that we feel we should be providing and continuing and maintaining? And so, how do we do that? And so, those questions will need to be resolved in short order to come to school committee so that in July is when we get to find out whether we have grant shortfalls or we lose those fundings, what's our plan going to be. The next item of which we have an obligation is under the new Student Opportunity Act, we have to designate and funding to support different learning. And you have the checklist, I've provided you information from a webinar call that we were on today, a group of us were on today with regards to sort of what that all means. And we're waiting for clarification on the 229,000. That is actually the net increase of our Chapter 70 aid. That's all we got. And so, how much of that is, has to be dedicated to reporting out on the Student Opportunity Act? So, what we're unclear about is, A, the dollar amount of our obligation, and the second thing we're not clear about is whether that can, we can use existing expenditures to meet that requirement, or whether those expenditures have to be from brand-new money. So, hopefully, February 10th, we'll get some more information. I know February 10th, we're supposed to get the dollar amount. Hopefully, they'll also clarify whether we can use existing dollars to meet the compliance or whether we, whether those are new dollars that have to meet the compliance. So, depending on, so that's up, that's a point of flux. A piece of good news is that the state is gonna be reimbursing for out-of-district transportation and special ed transportation. So, I've put in here a very conservative recommendation to increase our circuit breaker reimbursement by 100,000, because there, as you know, we budget our circuit breaker revenue line based on what we received in the current fiscal year. So, we don't know that number until July, and that, but we are able to submit for FY '20 transportation expenses, so we'll have a good idea in terms of whether that was conservative enough or too conservative. And potentially helps us with some other, it helps us going forward to pay for some of those expenses, particularly because this year, our special education line item for transportation has increased over $600,000. And then, I retained the building department, and then we took off the recreation intramurals. So, net, there was an increase to our expenditures of 834,000, which puts our challenge ahead of us in allocation at a million dollars from the projected revenue that we'll be receiving from the town. The other question that people have had is where, or what information, where, how do we spend $12 million in our contracted services line? And so, the top eight expense categories pretty much comes up to the 12 million. The first three are the largest, which is our tuition to our out-of-district tuition accounts, our transportation, both in district and out-of-district for transportation, yellow school bus, foster care, homeless. And those are what hit our budget. Our consulting services, I provided for you at your place a breakdown of kind of what all of the vendors and their purpose are for what we spend money on and who we spend money on. Consulting services is generally, a lot of these are special education-related services. We have building cleaning services, that's CleanCo. We have computer software, repair and maintenance, hardware, repair and maintenance. We have special education reimbursements. Those relate to specific cases and situations with families, where families may be paying for services and the district reimburses them as part of the IEP. We have a number of different leases, both for equipment, some building for, related to athletics. Legal services is in there, and then we have like a lot of little pieces and parts that come up to about 700,000. But as you can see, we have, in that other category, we have athletic officials of 62,000 that are in that category. So, this is kind of all funds. Student activities and programs, that's related to student field trips and other activities around that. Online book subscriptions and tools are now services as opposed to expenses. And then, we have moving expenses, which we, that results from teachers and hiring moving companies for teachers that are moving classrooms and are removing programs from one building to the next. So, that's kind of where we are with our budget and expenditures at this point. Some important dates that are important to understanding that is on February 10th, the Student Opportunity Act will know the dollar amount and whether it can be existing dollars or new dollars that we have to report on. The town school partnership meeting is on the 13th, and so, we'll have the final town meeting appropriation allocation available. And February 24th, so at your place is tonight, February 24th, we'll be launching publicly the OpenGov, which will show our budget and the narratives for our budget and the budget tables for the public to see. School committee, you have at your table instructions to be able to log in. You should have an email this afternoon to be able to log in so that you can begin to play in the sandbox with me. Mostly, what's available for you are the narratives for each of the programs. We'll, hopefully, by the end of school vacation week, or sooner, as we get some things finalized, you'll start seeing the budget tables for each program and the staffing tables for each program as well, or each narrative that we have. We're working closely with the town and trying to establish a very similar format, so the public, when they look at the school budget, they'll see things in the same format as the town budget and provide for some consistency of narrative and information. And printing is going to be a challenge, so if members of the public or the committee want a paper copy, we'll need to work with you on how to produce that, because it doesn't always come out nicely, and it's actually less, sometimes it's less readable. We're working on that with OpenGov to have a print document available to those that wish to have a print version. Are there any questions or clarifications that I can help provide?
Are you forecasting a time in the near future when we'll be able to ask you about some of these in greater detail, or is that supposed to happen now?
I can take the question, and if I have the information, I can either, I'll either take the question and answer it in a future meeting, or I'll answer the question, because I have the answer.
Would you prefer for us to email you questions?
I think probably, because then I can put them all together and make sure that the response is thorough and complete.
Okay. And then, a broader global question. I'm looking through the services contract, and there's a fair number of services that fall under the same constellation or categories or sets of services. I understand that there was quite a transition moving everything over from our previous chart of accounts system to OpenGov, and I believe that's why we're able to have all of this now.
No. No. They're not related.
Not related? Okay. Is there, in the course of our budget development process for our next budget, going to be a consideration of whether or not it makes sense to bring some of the services that we're contracting out in-house's FTEs that are attached to schools or fall under the Office of Special Services? Or, I mean, or is that an analysis that's going to happen?
So, there are a couple pieces that are considered around contracted services and bringing services in-house or not. So, here's one measure that I use on a regular basis, is that when I sign a contract under the school committee signature policy, I review that contract and one of, so I, what I, we have in the state of Massachusetts, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, what I refer to as the Romney Rule of Three, which generated out of the Big Dig project, where there are basically three rules that somebody has to comply with to be able to be considered an independent contractor. And so, many times in school districts, we hire lots of people that do lots of different things, and so, I'm always on the lookout for a contractor who really should be an employee rather than a contractor, because they cannot be, they have to really be a contractor and have multiple contracts and not be under our direction of time. So, I'm, I do that on a regular basis and occasionally kick one back and say, at some point, we need to post for this position, because this is really an employee, this isn't a contract anymore. So, that does happen. Most of these, in terms of the special ed area, special education area, are people who are doing really sort of very specific supports and services for students of which we do not hire for, or we have posted the position and we don't have an applicant pool, or we're in the middle of having, we're in the middle of hiring and replacing a position. And so, we need these services in the interim while we're waiting for an applicant.
I'd like to get out of the special education part of the budget.
Okay.
And I'd like to sort of head over to computer software. I see that we're spending $97,000 a year on Follett. I hope it's good.
Follett, that's our library.
That's our library system.
That's our library system.
That's not our like Aspen system or anything.
No, no, no. Follett is our, our librarians would be very unhappy if you got rid of Follett, as would I.
Is there, I mean, this is, this is a substantial budget. It's $465,000 a year. There's clearly services on here that are functionally designated, yeah, that's right, that are functionally designated as, you know, very specific, like Reed Speaker, for example, Spotify. You know, I think that the question that I have is, do we, how often do we kind of do a review of this and ask whether or not we need to upgrade any of our software or program subscription investments in order to take advantage of new products that are on the market that might bring multiple functions of these all in-house and maybe be a little more user-friendly?
So, I would say, my experience has been that there are certain budget departments that do this on a regular basis. In fact, it's actually kind of interesting you asked this question today of all days, because I just had a conversation with Scott Moore, who's working with Michelle Herman, our PD coordinator, on we, on the need for a, lack of a better, and my words not there, is tracking, PDP kind of tracking system for professional development, professional development offerings, and so, who has a product out there? And what are the, what are the software applications we already have? And does somebody already have this? And so, they looked at Frontline, which is, has our absence system and is in the education space. They looked at Teach Point, which is our evaluation system. And I suggested, I said, hey, you know, we're actually gonna have an update to Munis in the fall. Check out Munis, because Munis might actually become more accessible. They may have something. And so, they're actually reviewing and looking at who do we already do business with and do they already have this product, particularly if they're in the education space, because the whole PD world has kind of exploded in needing a software support with the national movement to evaluation and evaluation systems of teachers. And PD is a major component in supporting a teacher and making sure that they have their tool chest and skill sets that they need available to them. So, I would say they are doing that and looking at economies of scale in certain areas.
There's been a lot of curiosity about this budget. I just want to make sure, there's like identifiable names of children in here, so this is.
Right now, you are the only ones that have this.
Thank you.
It should not be, if you, please let me know if you see one, because we called that, so we could have, we called it quite a bit, which is why some has, some have detail, some vendors have detail and others don't. So, if you do see a student's name, please let me know, so we can make sure that comes out. out. Let me, can you show me where? I'll show, uh, I'll, I'll- Just show me where those are and we'll make sure they come out. That's not the, and those-
A couple thoughts. I mean, just to kind of pull the camera way, way back, um, I think one thing that you said at the beginning was important, which is that, um, while it is, um, very common to see fluctuations pretty much every week or two from January through to July, um, it does, first of all, for anyone going through this process the first time, those fluctuations can be confusing. Like why, how come it was a million and then it was 200,000 and now it's a million again? Or two, you know, but it looks like a kind of random and scary. I just, can you comment a little bit on your experience as a, as a business manager for the last 20 years? Whether this is, you know, wildly unusual or whether this is just something that, you know, transparency is great, but like the first time you do something, it feels different from the 20-something time. I won't, I won't put a number on it. Just talk a little bit about the fluctuation.
Yeah, so there, um, in Brookline, there's a significant amount of fluctuation. What's interesting this year versus prior years is what is fluctuating. Um, so we don't usually end up with, um, a new reporting requirement after, that is, has an April 1 deadline with a plan and a school committee vote. So the Student Opportunity Act, that's unusual in terms of something new. And then just a small dollar amount with it. And a dollar amount that is something, usually you get money and you get to do something with it as opposed to, oh, what, like, I, I already have another problem over here. The fluctuation, um, from year to year is pretty common. Um, part of why we, Ben and I had made, made a decision and, and sort of recommended is that we only have, um, we don't regularly report to school committee. We used to do a blow-by-blow, um, and it would get very confusing. So now we've just sort of condensed that into kind of two meetings, um, where we've given you, um, the recommendation, um, with the 251. And then we're, and we're expecting to just have you have a conversation around grants and grants management and the public buildings. And now I have three more things that got added to that list. So that, that is kind of a little bit unusual, um, in this year, but not unusual for this time of year to have a change. Usually, um, I'm just going to pick on Helen because she's usually asking me about the GIC and when's the GIC number. Well, that's settled. That's not, that's not one of our fluctuations and that usually has been a fluctuation. So this year is unusual in that the fluctuations are different, but the, what's not unusual is the fact that we have new information about something.
I mean, are we done or are we going to keep, I mean, is this, are we going to keep-
I hope we're done. I would like to be done because at some point, because right now we have to get to a point where we have to make a plan. Um, and so I know that there was a question earlier, uh, with regards to the school committee members is the vote. The town administrator needs to present a balanced budget and the school committee needs to vote a, um, recommendation or has to vote a number. And so I think we've been kind of loose around what we've called that number. Um, and so the first, what you'll be voting is the town meeting appropriation number. Um, and that, I don't have, unfortunately, I don't have a slide with me, uh, tonight, but, um, uh, the finance subcommittee has the, has what the town school partnership number will be. So that, that is a number school committee needs to vote. Um, it, I project it probably will be sometime in March, late March, um, that school committee will then take and have an allocation of how those resources are being allocated. And then that really becomes the school committee's budget. Um, that's when school committee will allocate out to personnel, contracted services, supplies, other, and the sort there. Um, and April, um, the advisory committee will be coming forward to get a, a presentation with where the school committee's budget is and revenue, um, and the like. And then town meeting will be occurring in May.
I mean, I've, I've been on the committee for a while. I remember this normally happening and Helen has, might be able to weigh in on this, but like the, when we start allocating budget categories, that's not till late March, early April. This number is a town meeting appropriation, which is a top-line number. It's not all the moving parts underneath. Not least because we're still getting new information about revenues and expenses and still dropping on us over the course of the next number of months. Is that your-
Revenue, yeah, revenue is not, revenue is going to be pretty-
Hopefully, yeah.
Let's just clarify what we mean by top-line number. I think that that's a very confusing term. Next week, we will be voting on total revenue to the district, right?
Revenue.
No, you'll be voting the town meeting appropriation request.
You'll be voting, that is it. Solely the town meeting appropriation request.
And maybe could you say, I know in two sentences or less, how you get that number?
That's from Town School Partnership and that's the available revenue from the town.
So the town gives you that number?
Town gives us that number.
I think, um, I, I think that there still is a clarification that's needed from last week's presentation, which has created a considerable, uh, set of, well, certainly a flurry of emails, right? Um, we apparently distributed an email last fall saying that we are in some sort of a $2.8 million deficit. Um, and then we gave a presentation in which we said we were, we were in a $250,000 deficit. And there's certainly information that is in circulation that suggests that the school leaders have been asked to cut $800,000 from the high school and $200,000 at, um, all of the other schools. I don't know if that includes the, but certainly at the K through eights. The question I believe that's on the table is, did, is, did last week's presentation imply that those cuts of $800,000 and then two, 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 to $200,000 at the K through eight level had been achieved and that what was less was now $250,000, which is now closer to $750,000? Or did it all just go away?
No, so, um, I'll repeat what I provided earlier to, earlier in my presentation because the slide's up on the screen, which shows the 2.8 million for January and where we were. Um, what is removed is, are the planned override expenses. So the planned override expenses has nobody in them. There's no position, they're all positions, they're vacancies. Um, it also includes carrying forward the FY20 supplies and materials cut, um, to those expense lines as level funding those expense lines. Um, so the only increases that happened on non-personnel accounts were for tuitions and transportation, special ed and regular ed transportation, um, and cleaning services for Two Clark Road. Personnel-wise, the only reduction, so the personnel number that's there is for all current staff, all current positions. It doesn't include, it doesn't include, what it doesn't include is anything that was planned as part of the override. No new positions. And, and Ben said that. So-
So I, I would put forth that although they are planned personnel, they are personnel cuts in that we will be reducing the number of the promises that we made with the 2018 override money to fund future positions regarding overcrowding at the high schools.
Yes, I guess I'm making the distinction is that there is no current employee in any of those positions.
No, I understand.
There are no current employees who have, so part of the, excuse me, part of the concern around, um, the planning that we have done in anticipation, um, is that there were, is potentially current employees in, being considered, or the positions that current employees sit in are being considered. None of that has been put forward. Only the positions that have, were part of the override. Yes, and I, I appreciate and I want to acknowledge the distinction that you're making, that those are positions that were planned, um, that they were promised to the community and that, but we were just trying to make sure everybody knew and understood that those were vacant versus filled, um, positions. But I appreciate the distinction that you're making around supports for students in the classroom and the impact of that. So I, I hear that.
Yes.
And I acknowledge that.
I would, I would put forth that if we don't keep that in our budget profile and then we are sort of kicking the can down the line as far as how we're going to find funding as we go on, if we don't make it an evaluation and an analysis of what is working well for us now. So that's a concern that I have. But I do think, I'm sorry, just to say one more thing, that it's important for people to understand that the number we're talking about voting, um, just to reiterate what's already been said, because I think it's really important, that the number that we would potentially vote on at a future meeting is the number that is being, that we would, the number not of how we would spend that money, but the number of money we would have available, the total revenue that we would be, what?
It's not revenue.
Okay, so I'm sorry. Helen's in my ear saying the word is revenue.
It says total revenue. You have a town appropriation.
Right, it's the total amount of money based on how we could fund it, that we could spend in, in my understanding of it, right? That's our, the total amount that we have been, are being told that we can have access to, that we would be asking town meeting to spend. And we are not voting on how that money would be spent. Although I think, for me, there is a, a piece that has discomfort with voting that number. I understand it's an income number and not how it's being spent, but I have discomfort with it being spent in the way that it's being talked about right now, where we would be cutting future planned spending that will impact students without addressing the problems now. So that is a problem for me in voting even that number.
And I, I want to pick up on what, on what Jennifer's saying because I think that there's a bit of a semantic issue that's at stake here. We're calling positions override positions that are supposed to be available to kids for instructional and, and support and other things. We're calling them, it sounds like we're calling them override positions because they haven't been filled. But there's a bunch of positions that we have been filling with override funding that we're presuming are going to remain in place that don't have contact with kids, right? I mean, there's been a very clear message from the community, right? Keep the cuts away from the kids. It's, it's pretty straightforward. And what we're looking at here and what we saw in previous budget presentations, including several budgets, including several presentations about the central administration budget, is that there was an increase in total staffing expenditures at the central administration level after the override, which are arguably override-funded positions.
So the 2015 override actually funded a number of central office positions, um, one of which was the deputy, was the special assistant for strategy and performance. Um, one was a, a position within, um, my department that is payroll. And, um, there was, was two senior director, a senior director position. Um, and so there were positions in the 2015 override that funded central administration to respond to, as I understood, because I just arrived in 2015, um, a significant level of, of burden of reporting and attention to curriculum and a variety of other pieces and programs. And the committee members that were here can probably fill in the rest, um, it, that were funded there. And so we showed those and, and provided those because those were added in FY16 as part of that 2015 override. So the table that was showed previously in terms of the number of positions, there were also positions added in terms of the help desk and planned, um, technology positions. And there were positions that were not, those were also part of the override. So there are, the positions that were added there, most of them came from the 2015 override. And I, I can work with Ben on showing and highlighting which ones those were.
And is the reason that those are not being cut is because they're currently filled?
I, so, so we have not, I have, we have not gotten to a point where we've made, um, a recommendation on what the reductions will be to balance the budget. So I think everything, there's still discussions that we're all having about what should be, other than the over, other than the override, the 2018 override positions of teachers and the .8 administrator for the high school, those are the only ones that we have, we have reduced at this point in our recommendation.
Just a process note because I think it's important, I think Ms. Napoli and Dr. Brown are, are raising an important question. So if next week's vote is about the total appropriation that we are receiving, there is still two months of time when we are working through the different budget categories and we still have between 250,000 to a million dollars yet to go, even with what you've preserved. And clearly what, what I've heard you say is that what we are preserve, what we're preserving is people in roles now and cutting roles that have not yet been filled. And I think part of the question that, as we think about the next two months of budget development cycle, is to say, we need to sort of look at everything, which I know you're still doing. I don't think that message is sort of out there. It kind of feels like what was presented last week was like, that's it, that's the, that's the, that's the budget, and it's not. And I, I just think that part of the awesomeness of transparency is that everybody can kind of see the sausage-making process as it goes. I think that's also confusing sometimes if you don't know where you are in the process, in the, in the sausage-making process. And so it does feel to me like in the next, it might be helpful to sort of talk through as we go through the next, whatever it is, between now and the beginning of April, um, what that kind of process looks like to then continue to wrestle this down. Because I think both the public and members of the community, either there are things that people are unclear on or things that people disagree with. Um, and I think it's just important to kind of, this is the process to kind of get to surface all of that. And then this is what we work through for the next couple of months. So I just, I, I don't, I don't know how else to say it, but like, yes.
I take your point, I take your point very well. And that's a very helpful guide to what's going to happen over the next two months.
Yeah.
I think that the question that's on the table is what happened over the last two months while we were receiving a number of budgetary presentations? And what last week's presentation means about what has happened in the last two months? And I think that there is, what is happening right now is that in general circulation in the community and within the schools, there is a sense that whatever conversations took place between the school leadership and the central administration leadership resulted in some kind of cuts that seems to have resulted in last week's presentation. And that if you actually ask educational leaders how they feel about the cuts to anticipated hiring, they're not that okay with it based on projected enrollment. And I think that that is the standing question that remains unresolved.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to jump in. Anybody else have comments? Helen, did you have something?
Well, just on one particular spot where, where the administration looked at those 10 positions. I think if you look at the enrollment in 2015 for the high school, it was 1,933 students. It's 130 students more today. Now that, in my mind, and then projected next year, actually, um, is not even clear, especially with the high school being-
Probably roughly 65.
I'm sorry?
Roughly 65.
65.
Yeah, the bubble is the current seventh grader, so-
Right, so you wouldn't hire for next year for the following year?
So the following year, the current seventh graders, I don't know exactly what that number is, but it's in like the 80-plus to 100.
620, I think.
Yeah, there's, and, and again, I just want to caution people on that high school number because when the construction project, and usually during construction projects, our numbers dip by about 10%. We saw it at College Corner School, we see it all the time. Uh, people come back when there's a gorgeous new facility. So I would also caution that the, the low number next year is going to be different from the seventh graders.
I'm not saying we'll never need those positions. What I'm saying is we wouldn't hire those positions until we need them. It does not make sense, fiscally, to hire teachers for students that are coming in two years. You would hire them when you need them.
So Helen, I think, I think everybody has really good questions here and perhaps we should ask either Mary Ellen to address those with, uh, maybe someone from the high school could come just to kind of let us know what those, what those needs are and the numbers. I mean, I think we're very aware that, uh, numbers are growing, but we don't know what the needs, uh, in terms of staffing is, and that seems-
I want to emphasize, I think that this is relevant to K through eight schools as well. I think, you know, we're going to be bringing people from the high school, then we should be bringing people from the K through eight schools because it's not clear to me whether or not there have been cuts at the K through eight schools of anticipated hiring for existing-
Yeah, so there, so I will, I can answer the K through eight piece and, and we need more information from the high school. Um, so the K through eight and FY20, we did not, uh, fund the three FTEs that were part for the elementary schools, uh, for expansion for a couple, a couple reasons. One was enrollment and the other one was because we actually don't physically have the classrooms. Um, so at the elementary level, we are, um, at least for this year, we were running into having classrooms available to actually add sections. Um, and so we are looking at that. We also have class sizes at the elementary level where we really should be looking at consolidating, um, classrooms. And how do we do that? It's been something that has been done in many districts and used to be done here. Um, and the last time I would imagine it would be done is when we weren't having an elementary enrollment growth spurt. And that's been going on since 2005. So the institutional memory of those kinds of ebbs and flows around enrollment and sectioning is not, you know, they've been doing it at the high school for a long time and now that, now that enrollment is, is starting to hit the high school, but it's not also at the same level that was being projected either, um, at that time. So when the override was, was passed. So your point is really important one for us to really sort of know, understand, acknowledge, and sort of provide for you kind of what is going to be happening to, uh, the class section size, um, at elementary- at elementary and the high school level and is the number of FTEs that we have. The right number of FTEs. I would argue one of the challenges school districts have every year, all the time, is having the right licensed teachers in the right subject matter for the number of students that you need and the sections that are selected and all of that. That's a forever, forever challenge in education. So we could be finding that we need, you know, different types of licensure and different types of teachers and to... So we'll, absolutely, we'll be looking at it.
Emily, Jennifer, one more?
So I think it's a great idea to have the high school come and talk us through what the enrollment needs are so that we can make sure that we're meeting the class size that school committee has made a commitment to. And I'm just worried about how we will protect that if we say we don't, if we say that next year we didn't need that growth, but it would be the following class after that, how are we going to protect that in our budget? If we go and spend that money or we don't make a budgetary adjustment for that, where is that going to magically come from the next year? So we need to be thoughtful about that planning process. And I think that this is a good time for school committee to sort of give feedback on, on more information we need as we continue this budget process. And I think another question, and to be fair, another question that we've heard a lot from and that I don't have the answer to, that I would like to have more information on. There's been a lot of conversation about the size of our central office compared to relative comparable districts and that we have a lot more staff. And I don't have the data to know enough about that, to be able to explain that to community members. So that would be helpful for me to be able to understand why, if we need those staff, we have them and how much more or less it really is. And so that would be really helpful in the budget process in addition to sort of understanding the needs at the high school. Because I am very concerned, this sort of idea of going the second year is still kicking, kicking it down the line further if we need to have a plan for that.
Okay.
I hope that was clear.
Yeah, so Sharon, I think we're going to go to public, oh, David, I'm sorry.
I definitely appreciate these points being made about personnel and anticipated cuts to personnel and ensuring that we do not engage in short-term thinking where we make cuts today that we're then going to have to allocate resources toward those positions in the near future. But I have a couple of different questions regarding the budget in other categories. So while personnel is extremely important and the lion's share of our budget, there's, there are also resources such as physical materials. So just as a specific example, renting versus leasing of copy machines, but more broadly, renting versus leasing. Is there an analysis that's being done to determine when we would be better off financially to own something as opposed to what appears to be paying annual leases for copy machines?
No, there isn't. That, we don't have the capacity in the finance office to actually do that. I will say that over my career, we, I have done plenty of copier purchasing versus leasing. And copiers take a beating. They last less than three years, maybe four years. So buying a copier or accepting some, a used one from somebody else is not always a good investment. Leasing copiers, we actually, those machines, I have to say, I don't get the copier complaints here because the majority of them are leased from districts I've been in where I had a mix of leased copiers versus owned copiers, where the copier was 10 years old and they're kicking it and doing whatever because they need their copies, no fault of the user. So copiers in general are, those are, I'm in the leased category until I'm not. Most of what we're paying for is service to keep them up and running. So when a teacher walks up and needs 25 copies, you know, or sets of, you know, it's ready to go and it's ready to run and paper's in it and it's, it's good. So some of the other equipment I have to look at, I have to look at the number. We have an inordinate number of object fields in terms of breaking down minutia and categories. And some of them mean the same thing, and so they can actually get collapsed. And are they the same, are they just finite for a short fix? So yeah, there needs to be more time and analysis spent on that. But there need to be resources available, capital, human capital resources available to do that.
And the other category I wanted to ask about is transportation. So I see that we have a lot of line items for transportation. I'm wondering if there's any work being done to potentially streamline that, perhaps look for greater efficiencies, maybe go with one or two vendors instead of dozens.
Welcome to the world of special education transportation. Because we have, we send students to 40 locations. We may send two vehicles to the same location for a variety of reasons. And so it's, sometimes it's all about who's available to actually take on that ride. Who's got the vehicle, who's got the driver? A number of years ago, I participated in a joint, sort of joint bid of special ed transportation where area towns got together, they were budding and all going to the same places to really create some efficiencies. It was phenomenal. We saved, in my former district, we saved a ton of money. Parents were happier. Brookline can't actually participate in that because of how we're situated and located and the time limit that students shouldn't be on a vehicle for more than an hour. So unfortunately, in Brookline, we, because of how we're located and how to get in and out of this community, we can't always partner. So we end up with a number of different vendors to provide that transportation. So those are typically van companies and small vehicle companies. We do go out to bid for those vans and those companies, we do do that. So we do have set pricing and know what that is. We also just recently bid the yellow school bus. And you should be getting that contract results soon for that, for our fee-based busing at the high school and the elementary and language transportation for that. So we also, just the other part to know is we have to report to the state all the different types of transportation we provide. So I need a line item for regular ed, I need a line item for special ed. I need a line item for foster care, homeless, vocational school, MECO. MECO grant pays for their MECO transportation. So that, there's a level of detail I have to report on. But yeah, I appreciate the number of vendors, it's a lot to manage.
Okay, we're going to take one more before we go to public comment, so please just bear with us. And Ms. Scato?
I just, I just want to put out a caveat here. Because I, I hear what people are saying, certainly as a former teacher in Brookline, I don't think we should be doing things to cut what we have in the schools and the people who work with children. But I also, because I've been on the school committee for so long, realize what the changes in central office staff have meant. The school system has grown by 40% over the past 10 or 12 years. When that happens, it's like any other company that grows. There are jobs that have to be done. What do all these people do, you say? Well, some of them spend their days looking through the computer files because we've had open records requests. And they have to go through as many as 10,000 and 20,000 emails in some cases. That takes time. There are all kinds of things like that that need to be done at this level. I don't walk around this building ever seeing anybody sitting on their hands doing nothing. They are all busy running a school system so that things flow easily and move out into the school buildings easily. I think we just need to be careful and that we know what we are doing. Because again, I am the last person who wants to cut classroom, things in the classroom, who I certainly don't want larger classes, et cetera. But I think we need to be careful. It's very easy to say, cut the central office, cut the central office. Well, sometimes you can do that and sometimes you can't. And I'm just putting that out there because I think we need to be thoughtful, which I think Mary Ellen is trying to be in all that we do.
Okay. We're going to go to public comment. Robin could get that for us. Depending on how many people we have, we'll limit it to two or three minutes, I guess three minutes probably. I don't know how many have signed up. You know, just a reminder that this is just a part of the whole project, a budget developing process. So again, we've tried to say many times tonight that next week we have a likely vote on the town meeting appropriation number, figure. That is not to give us the whole budget. So we will have until end of March into April to look at that other side, which is the expense side. And so you have plenty of time to get your emails to us, your phone calls, however you want, and even public comments. So we'll have public comment tonight specifically on next year's budget. But in addition, there'll be other public comments, not maybe on the budget, but on, just because we have them every time we have a meeting. So you do have other opportunities. So I just, I just want you to be clear that this is important information for us to receive. This is the right time because we are then going to be spending a number of weeks talking about what that other side of the ledger looks like for those accountants of you out there. Okay? So first one is Gail Davis. And then to get ready is Felipe Genovese.
I speak into this.
Yes, please state your name and...
I sure will. Okay, I'm Gail Davis. I'm a resident and I'm a retired teacher in the Brookline schools. And I'm largely speaking here tonight in that capacity because I worry that the voice of the teacher is not being heard enough and that decisions are being driven in ways that are not considering what teachers know is in the best interest of students. So as you probably can tell, I feel very passionate about this. I would never speak at a meeting like this except that I'm sad and I'm worried and I'm discouraged about what I see in the schools now compared to what the schools were like when I had the privilege of being part of this system. I taught for over 30 years. The bulk of that was in Brookline. I feel enormously privileged to have had that career. I couldn't have worked in a better place. I had the support of superintendents like Bob Spurber or Jim Walsh, who were inspired and inspirational leaders who had tremendous respect for teachers and supported teachers. Jim Walsh walked the halls of the school all the time. He could be seen walking into classrooms. He knew what was going on and he supported what we were initiating. I don't see that happening now. And so I am concerned. Largely, my career was great because of the people that I worked with, and I say that very sincerely. The staff was bright, interested, interesting, collaborative, progressive. It was exciting, it was stimulating, it was amazing. And when I go and visit now, people don't experience that kind of a high. There's, they're demoralized in many ways. And I will, I'll give you a couple of examples of that. And we did have the support of superintendents and principals. And yes, this is a message also about your superintendent search, which is not the subject of today. But boy, I hope you guys take that really seriously because it makes a difference. And I know what it was like to work under a man like that. And we haven't seen that. So yes, my years were exciting and energizing. And let me tell you about a couple of initiatives that I was lucky to participate in and that still exist. These are teacher-driven initiatives. The first one was I was offered the opportunity to co-initiate the Teachers Mentoring Teachers Program at the high school. It's still there, it's still thriving. And we worked with and trained teachers. We helped them acculturate into the Brookline community of professionals. And we helped them grow. And it was meaningful, it was meaningful to me, and I know it was especially meaningful to them. And it still exists 20 years down the road. I was also part of the first team that developed the IMP curriculum. That was a teacher initiative, and it's still available for students who need that kind of math education. There are teachers who want to do these things today and feel stifled, feel like they're not getting... I'm telling you this straight up, this, I don't, I don't kind of BS my way through this stuff. I'm just a real person out there.
So your three minutes are up, please? Your three minutes are up, so if you could wrap up, please? I know, you have a lot to say. You can send us an email.
I think I will. Okay, it did say three to five minutes in the...
But when there's so many people that want to speak, we need to limit it to three.
Well, let me just, I was going to give you a couple of real examples of teachers who've been demoralized, who are leaving the system.
Yeah, send us the email, please. We do read them.
I'll give you my conclusion then, and I would... If you think it's meaningful, perhaps you have something.
I can give a... Okay.
Wow, okay, I was afraid that I was, you know, you guys may have statistical things you want to talk about. I don't talk statistics, even though I was a math teacher.
So you've got two more minutes?
I've got two more minutes.
Yep, go for it, go for it.
So one, I had the occasion to speak with a teacher at the elementary schools, a very seasoned teacher in a specialty who had developed a particular program. This is a couple of years ago. It was a success, teachers liked it. Her principal came to her and said, I'm moving you to another grade with no explanation. So there was her program that she had worked on and developed. And what was the, so she felt terrible. What happened? She was going back to school to get an additional degree so she could leave. She didn't want to be part of the system anymore. I had coffee this morning with someone from the high school who talked about the feelings that she had of non-support from the administration and gave me lots of examples, which because of, I can't talk about, because I can't betray her. But as I was leaving, I found out about a seasoned teacher who I had worked with, who was amazing, who's already applying for jobs at other schools. We don't want that to happen. This is an amazing place that's always had an amazing reputation. And I wanted to return to that, and I believe that it can. But you've got to listen to the teachers. You've got to take their, their initiatives and their knowledge and their experience into account. So when you're making these budget decisions and when you talk about the flow of this and that, the next thing, what's driving the flow? What's driving the professional development? And so it should be what's happening in the classroom. So I would say, this is my conclusion here, support your teachers. Put your resources into the classroom where students benefit directly. I agree with Ms. Abramovich, cuts should be made as far from the classroom as possible. And yes, that may mean administration. But that's where it happens, in the classroom, please listen to your teachers. It's the teachers who understand the needs of the students. They're in the trenches, have the immediate knowledge and experience. On a positive note, I believe it is possible to ensure the Brookline schools, again, enjoy the respect they've always known. They don't have that now. I'm a resident, I pay, I want to be able to sell my house. Support your teachers, the students deserve no less.
Thank you, Mary Ellen. Is Felipe here? No? Julie Jett? And after Julie, Karen Stenrude? Will be up next? Okay.
Thank you. My name is Julie Jettie, I live on Payson Road. My children attend the Edith C. Baker School. And I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 16. I understand that the school committee and superintendent right now are in a process to determine what to cut in order to balance the budget. But I'm here tonight to ask that you not simply look for ways to cut, but to look hard at what our district's priorities are and whether we are funding them. In particular, I would like the district to consider how to better teach struggling readers. I'm the parent of a student with dyslexia. Dyslexia is a learning disability that makes it difficult for individuals to decode written language. Without specialized phonics-based instruction, it is excruciatingly difficult for dyslexic people to learn to read and write. Dyslexia is not rare. It impacts an estimated 5% to 15% of our population. In Brookline, that amounts to between 400 and 1,200 students in our schools. While dyslexia is common, it can be devastating when kids don't get the help they need academically and emotionally. A 2009 study of the social-emotional impacts of dyslexia stated, eventually these cognitive challenges and the frustration and stress they cause have socio-emotional effects. Students with dyslexia often experience anxiety, depression, and low self-esteem at levels far above their peers without dyslexia. We also know dyslexic individuals are more likely to drop out of high school and more likely to be incarcerated as juveniles and adults. The good news is these outcomes are not foregone conclusions. With solid research-based reading intervention early on, excuse me, or even with more intensive and expensive remediation later on, dyslexic individuals can thrive. A few weeks ago, I pulled together a group of about a dozen parents of dyslexic kids to learn more about their experiences. Here are a few things I learned. Here are a few things I learned. Individual families have spent thousands or tens of thousands of dollars on private tutoring, specialized after-school programs, or specialized summer camps. Many parents feel they've subsidized the district's failure to provide kids with what they really need. And there's got to be dozens of parents who can't afford those additional interventions. Almost universally, dyslexic students were first referred to LLI, a general education-based reading intervention, without their being screened for dyslexia. LLI may be very helpful for students with more general challenges that also make reading difficult, but for dyslexic kids, it's been a delay in their receiving the specialized instruction they need. Given that interventions are more successful the earlier they're given, this seems like a missed opportunity. Despite the likelihood that between 400 and 1,200 kids in Brookline schools are dyslexic, only one school has an embedded intensive program for kids with language-based learning disabilities. The existence of this program is not widely shared, and parents don't know how to advocate to get their kids into it when students make insufficient progress in their home school. So getting back to budget priorities. I've been told that for some time, the district has intended to prioritize screening and early interventions for dyslexic students. As far as I can tell, based on my experience and what I've learned from other parents, that hasn't yet happened. So I would urge you to consider the following as you set the budget. Number one, the district needs to commit to a research-based reading curriculum that foregrounds phonics-based learning, helping all students in reading, writing, and spelling. That curriculum, that commitment must include providing teachers with the research and training that they may not have received in their pre-teaching education. This is not always part of the curriculum in education.
Could you finish up, please? Your time is up.
Yep.
Thanks.
All children who are referred to LLI should be screened, and the other person got more time, so I'd appreciate a little more myself.
But we're taking it from other peers.
Thanks. I don't need a whole nother minute. Screen all children referred to LLI for dyslexia to determine if further diagnostic testing is warranted. A state law was passed last year that will require all kids to be screened, so let's not wait for those regulations to be promulgated to address our at-risk population. Ensure all our special education teachers who are using specialized curricula with students with learning base, with language-based learning disabilities are certified in the method that they're being, that is being used. And lastly, I would strongly recommend that you consider replicating the lab program at Driscoll at the district's other schools. This may seem like a daunting proposal, given our budgetary situation, but better intervention in the earliest years could result in less intervention and less spending as students get older. More importantly, it could lead to better outcomes for our students. Thank you for your consideration, and I have some items to leave behind. Is there someone I can?
Thank you very much. Karen is next, and after that, Matthew Bracken.
Point of information.
Good evening. I'm Karen Stensrud. I live at Sherman Road, and I'm the parent of daughters who attend the Edith C. Baker School, an eight-year-old and an 11-year-old. And my eight-year-old, a third grader, is currently on an IEP program. It was discovered in the second grade that she, you know, wasn't progressing as her peers were with, you know, reading and writing. And, you know, so we've deferred to the school, and I know all the folks that are helping her are working really hard. But this fall, in the parent-teacher conference, I was a little, you know, chilled to learn that as a third grader, she had only just reached a, I think, late first grade, early second grade reading position. And I think currently, she's receiving services. She gets a pull-out to a literacy, to work with a literacy person for 30 minutes, three times a week, which, from my understanding, is not enough. And, you know, I feel very, very concerned that if, you know, these budget constraints affect this program in particular, that, you know, this could be, you know, have really horrible consequences down the line. You know, I mean, fortunately, you know, my husband and I are in a position, we actually have insurance, and, you know, we're currently in the process of having her tested to actually get a diagnosis to determine what's going on for her. So, you know, insurance is covering a chunk of that, but we're also looking at, you know, a chunk of a couple thousand dollars just to find out what's going on for her. And, you know, I know that, you know, there are people, Brookline residents, who are of, you know, fewer means than perhaps I am, who, you know, are in a place of quiet desperation of not getting their kids' needs met. So rather than looking at, you know, taking away from that program potentially, again to echo Julie, now is the time to really bolster it and to put in, to place some interventions, you know, earlier on, so we can get as big of a jump on these sorts of, you know, neurodiverse learning patterns that go on for our kids as early as possible. So, thank you.
Matthew, and then Donna, you'll be next.
This is a little bit short. Thank you very much. Matthew Bracken, I'm a proud parent of two young girls at the Edith Baker School, and I'm here just to ask the question is, I just hope that when we look at the budget for the future, and specifically for teachers, that money is found, or somehow we have a different change in our taxes, that the teachers are supported. I have a younger daughter, and she's doing well, but my oldest daughter is dyslexic. And we discovered this very early. We had great teachers who noticed it, and we've done a lot of things outside of the classroom with tutoring and special schools to keep her at grade level so she won't fall behind and feel unsuccessful. And I know that all of us want our children to be very successful, and that's the point of having good teachers. But when I talk to the teachers at Baker, specifically the ones who teach language and tutor my daughter, they feel under-resourced, and that's our responsibility. That's our community responsibility. And I know that this committee is doing their best with the budget and the issues in place. And I run my own business, and I ship to 100-plus countries around the world, and I have to deal with numbers all day long. When I look at the budget, and I say to myself, and Julie had said earlier, there's somewhere between 400, 1,200 students in our district that are possibly dyslexic. We've not discovered, or we've forgotten them, or haven't known. I think we're underserving those children, and we could do better. And this is true for all special education, not just children with dyslexia like my daughter, who I love and care about. But when we talk about self-esteem, I've seen her self-esteem suffer this year. I've seen her wake up and cry and say, "I don't want to go to school." It's because she's ashamed. She's ashamed that she can't keep up with her peers. I know we all measure ourselves, whether our jobs, our houses, our cars, or our careers, but kids just want to measure themselves on, can I read as fast as the kid next to me? Can I write a paragraph? And I love the words we throw out today, "Reading, writing is encoding and decoding." You know, I'm the youngest of a large family of 12, and I have to laugh when I hear these words. And the parents here in this room, I don't think they're saying that they're unwilling to actually put money and help the school district, but I don't know if the question's been asked. And I also know there's a lot of people in this town who feel at a certain level, they paid enough in taxes, and why should I have to pay more? And that's fine. That's your prerogative. But I don't think it's true for most people that attended this meeting tonight. So if I have to vote with my dollars, I'll vote with it, and I'll pay more taxes because these kids deserve better. And the other issue is we'll leave a legacy behind for the students behind my daughter. I'm not just asking for her or other kids in her grade. It's all the kids that come after. Also for teachers, if they have better education in some of the methods that work for dyslexia, that education is worth money. Those teachers will be paid more long-term. Guess what? They deserve the money. I want to give them my money. I'm tired of taking my money and paying it to places like Carroll School, or Landmark School, or Lyndon Moot Bell and Newton. I'd rather give my money to my own school district, and it's disappointing, and I know you're doing your best. And I see a lot of parents who know, and I coach a lot of soccer teams, so watch out. Other schools, Baker's got a better soccer team.
Yeah, Donna, after Donna, Steven Ehrenberg.
Hi, Chairperson and members of the school committee. Thank you for having me here to share my thoughts. My name is Donna Perry. I have two children in the Brookline schools, a sixth grader at CCS and a seventh grader at Lawrence. I was finally able to review the slides from last week's budget presentation. And in it, on slide, I think it was number 37, it was titled, "Where Do We Go From Here?" Mr. Loomis asserts that the school committee vote is on the total town meeting request, which I think you guys discussed earlier before I actually walked in the door. And I can understand that. But I looked very closely at the PSB manual, which I refer to very regularly when questions come up for me. And I think that assertion is simplifying and actually mistaking some of your responsibility as school committee members regarding the budget. Specifically in Section B20 under Finance, the policy manual mandates that the school committee works to ensure that necessary funds are appropriated for the district and that a balance is maintained between needs and resources in the distribution of available monies. In Section D1, the policy manual mandates that the school committee is committed to funding insofar as possible within the resources available to it those programs for children which enable the staff to carry out educational philosophies expressed in the manual. So I ask you to ask yourselves, do you understand the budget you are being asked to approve? Are you confident that the funds outlined in the budget are meeting the balance between needs and resources? And are you 100% satisfied that you are funding the programs to enable staff to carry out our educational mission successfully? And if you cannot answer yes definitively and truthfully, then it is your ethical and fiduciary responsibility not to approve the budget in its current form. Furthermore, given BFAC's recent report urging that we discontinue the status quo approach to managing the financial affairs of the public schools of Brookline, it is incumbent upon you that you are making fiscally responsible decisions while fulfilling wholeheartedly the responsibilities of your elected office. Your constituents have spoken in large numbers, urging you to keep the cuts far away from our classrooms, and the budget presented showed exactly that. The removal of 15 override planned additional teachers and a planned administrator for Brookline High School. For me, this brings to mind a quote often ascribed to Maya Angelou, "They may forget what you said, but they will never forget how you made them feel." And I want to walk away, I will, I am wrapping up, I swear, Susan. I want to walk away from this budget process feeling heard, and I want to walk away from this budget process feeling confident that you have all the information you need to make a truly informed decision for our children. I want to walk away from this budget process feeling like you've listened to the people that voted you into office. And most of all, I want to walk away feeling like I can trust again that our children and our classrooms and our educators are at the forefront of every single dollar in that budget. Thank you.
After Steven, we have Susan below.
That was great. Thank you. First, I just want to say I've been to a handful of these meetings now, and I feel like I've just started to appreciate how much time you all are spending on it, what is a volunteer task. I know you hear this a lot, but I'm grateful for the time you're putting in. And I also want to say how heartening this discussion has been today. I've, the last few meetings I've been to, I was surprised how much energy one could give the matter of structured parking, and I'm very glad to hear much more energy put into the budget today. I'd like to make three very quick points. One, and what wraps them all together is that I'm very concerned that you're not getting the data you need to make evidence-based decisions. The first point is that I did understand from the last meeting that the budget being presented by interim Superintendent Loomis was a quarter-million-dollar deficit, not a $2.8 million deficit, and that there were not cuts that were expected to be borne at the school level, and that the change was that there was, that he was going to no longer anticipate future growth. The question, though, was why did he no longer make that assumption? There was no data to back up that change. And in general, there is no data backing up any changes in forecast. Was there a forecasting mechanism that he relied on? I don't think Mary Ellen referred to that at all. Was there, was there any evidence, in fact, consulted in making this decision? Was my understanding when, that the override was planned explicitly in part to fund that growth? That's the first point. The second point was, I'd like to correct a comment that Mary Ellen made earlier, saying that there were no explicit recommendations made by Mr. Loomis in the last presentation. In fact, there were two slides. One, where he asked the school committee to consider 10 potential areas for cuts. He listed out 10. This was on the slide developing a balanced budget. But then, on the next slide, if you'll remember, called Target Adjustments in Staffing Program and Services, he said each school is likely to have a number of fractional FTE adjustments based on input from principals. This is the only area where he said that there is a likely cut, even if it's fractional, and even after this grand swell of parents complaining that the school should be the last target for cuts. This is not a misunderstanding. This is the superintendent saying that the cuts are going to hit the classroom. This was not a misunderstanding. This was not a misreading. This is a statement of purpose from the superintendent. The third point is, I just want to, I want to reiterate something I said a month ago in response to something you said quite rightly, Moscato. I think there is an assumption that central administration is sitting on their hands. That is not widely shared. I don't think that there is widespread assumption that there's bureaucratic bloat here. I think the question is, is it commensurate with what the school needs? Does it reflect our school priorities? I'm sorry, let me just give one stat, and then I'm off. Oh, that's not even the.
This is yours.
Let me just say that between 2005 and 15, we had a net enrollment increase of 1,500 students. We added 200 full-time, full-time FTEs, and we had 18 FTEs at the central admin level. The next five years, we added 12 FTEs at the central admin level. We added more FTEs in the whole system, but how many students did we add? 300. That's a greater FTE increase for that five-year period with 1/5th the number of students. Why? None of that has been explained in any of the presentations I've been, I've attended. It remains baffling, and it seems such a foundational question. Just to wrap up, I just want to urge the, more discussions like this, where the school committee urges Inspector, interim Superintendent Loomis and his deputies to provide the information you need to approve a real budget. Thanks very much.
Susan is next, and after Susan Beth Jones.
My name is Susan Balo, and I'm a very proud teacher at the Edith C. Baker School. I'm very fortunate to work in a town that loves learning, and I've been here since 1995, so this is not my first rodeo. I did have the pleasure of working under Jim Walsh, and he actually did, in his three-piece suit, come into my classroom many times and sit with the kids. He was a very big guy, and he would sit with the kids and work with them, and it was magical. Made the kids, and it made me feel so connected and so appreciated. So this is just to say I appreciate the chance to speak on behalf of a really wonderful district, and I would agree, a district that is in some peril. I would just want to begin with a point of clarification. If I heard Ms. Norman correctly, and I may not have, but she was talking about consolidation, and in my institutional memory, we have always consolidated classrooms, K to 8 and at the high school. And I can tell you that my own kid was in a sixth grade at Baker in 2013. Is that right? She's a freshman in college now. So that sixth grade went from four sections to three, four smaller sections to three very large sections of 24, 25, and 26. That was not good for those kids. There were a lot of kids who were ELS, and a lot of kids with very challenging learning profiles, and being in a group of 26 12-year-olds, it's not optimal. So we want to aim for more like class sizes of 18. I would also say that this same child of mine, who was a very happy product of the public schools of Brookline, when she was in a Japanese class, her freshman year, there were 20 kids in, I think in three sections, but the next year, there were 30 kids in each section. And particularly in English language, or I'm sorry, in foreign language, it's, you know, it's all about the talking and the FaceTime. So that's my point of research. I would just say I'm here, my purpose in being here is because I am, like every teacher in these schools, in loco parentis, and I take that very seriously. I am in the place of parents, and I trust that when I sent my two children to Brookline, everyone else took it very seriously, and that's the reason it works. everyone else took it very seriously, and that's the reason it works. I would say what I learned about values from my own parents who lived through the Great Depression was that when times are tough and your budget is tight, the first thing that my parents always did was cut luxuries. So stop spending on the second car, the vacations, et cetera. My parents, and I know their parents, took food off their plate to feed their own kids. And I guess that's what I'm asking. If you're not elbow-to-elbow with the kids, are you really value-added? So I would agree, Sharon, we've got to just keep these kids away from the cuts. And I know that's going to be painful for someone, but I would ask you, please, not to take the cuts in the place of the classroom. Thank you all.
Beth, after Beth, will be, I don't know, is it Eli Silk?
My name is Beth Jones. I've been a school consultant for 25 years, going in and out of schools from pre-K through high school. And I'm actually going to read a letter that I sent to all of you today, which I'm guessing many of you have not had the opportunity to read it. And so, in the event that you don't ever have the opportunity to read it, I'm going to read it to you. Dear School Committee Members, I have been a taxpaying resident of Brookline since 2006. I have had a student in the Brookline schools for that entire time, from BEEP through BHS. We have accessed the most comprehensive sped services available in the town, including transportation and a placement outside of our home school. We have played school sports at BPS, participated in arts events after-hours presentations, and utilized BPS to its full potential. I have grown increasingly concerned about the state of our long-admired school system and those in charge of it. I am thoroughly frustrated with the slash-and-burn approaches that are presented to us, the patronizing tone that is often taken with parents and concerned citizens, a "we know more than you do, let us just take care of this" tone, and the decline of services, liberal arts opportunities, and unique curriculum provided to our town's children. For a very long time, Brookline was the pinnacle of public education. We no longer hold that position or reputation, and it has been an obvious diminishment evident to anyone who's paying a moat of attention. I truly believe that we can bring our schools back to a position of strength, but it will not happen by removing teaching staff. It will not happen by decreasing -- whoops, my brother's calling me, excuse me. And I had such momentum. I truly believe that we can bring our schools back to a position of strength, but it will not happen by removing teaching staff. It will not happen by decreasing services to the sped population. I urge you to please look inside your own office. Look inside Town Hall. There is absolutely no reason why the administrative staff should have climbed while you're seeking to remove teachers. I do not want my tax dollars going to more curriculum designers and accountants who elect to remove history and science classes while padding the home office. And please don't tell me or anyone else that this is a simplification of the situation. With fewer teachers, the children receive a lesser education. That's as simple as it becomes. How can you possibly cut the high school staff by 20%, watch the town's population expand further, and continue to provide an excellent education? This is only one example. I'm attaching questions here that were raised by Magna Chakrabarti. I am completely in line with her queries. Please answer them, and please restore, and ideally improve, the excellent education that our town's children deserve. I'm going to read the questions that Magna has included in a newsletter because I think they're worth hearing for those who haven't received them. Why does, one, why does a district recommend cutting planned growth in the teaching staff at BHS even as the student body at the high school could grow by 20% in the next few years? Two, in 2018, voters approved an override specifically to fund additional teaching staff. Why is a district proposing to use those funds now to close structural deficits? Three, why, I have a few more questions. Why and how did the district find $660,000 in refinements and special education tuition transportation costs? Why has a district not provided line item detail on what constitutes the $11 million services budget? Why is a district incapable of providing any additional information at all on what's in the professional development budget? Why is there no additional information on the $1 million other budget category? Why, even as a district has been running a structural deficit for several years, has central office added almost a dozen positions? Why has Mr. Loomis not committed to any cuts in central office? Why does a district's budget management strategy begin with impacts to children in classrooms? Why did the administration not hear public appeals to protect classrooms first? Thank you.
Thank you, Eli. And after Eli, Scott Murphy will be next.
Hello, my name is Eli Silk. I live on Chestnut Hill Ave., and I'm the parent of two children who currently attend Heath School. I'm here on behalf of the Parent Advisory Committee for Innovation, we call ourselves IPAC, to advocate for increased support for the district's enrichment and challenge support program. I have a more formal letter that I would like to leave with you today, but allow me to summarize our position. IPAC comprises committed parents from all of Brookline's K-8 schools. We meet regularly with the district's ECS coordinator, Matthew Rosenthal, to learn about and help to improve the ECS program in our schools. We also work closely with our respective school's ECS specialist in any way we can. And last year, we helped to organize a well-attended district-wide Maker Day at the Coolidge Corner School. In light of the conversations here about district's budget, space, time, and curriculum, the parent members of IPAC feel strongly that the district should be increasing resources devoted to ensuring that all PSB students have access to enriching, challenging, and interdisciplinary project-based learning opportunities. We are advocating against simply maintaining those resources at current levels and certainly do not support the reduction of those resources. Our concerns were heightened, given the December 2019 retirement of Tanya Gregoire, a beloved and impactful ECS specialist that split her time between Heath and Pierce, and the decision not to fill her position for the remainder of the school year. Unfortunately, the current situation means that ECS must now make do with just six specialists, 4.3 FTEs split across the eight K-8 schools, and that Heath School no longer has a designated ECS specialist at all, creating a significant educational disparity. In our presentation on Tuesday to the Curriculum Subcommittee, Matthew Rosenthal effectively conveyed the mission, structure, and benefits of the ECS program. I won't repeat those ideas, except to say that we agreed with all the benefits he shared, and many IPAC members were in attendance at the meeting as a sign of our support. Further, we were thankful that the sentiment expressed from multiple school committee members was highly supportive of ECS and its critical function in our district. We agree with the PSB central administration that there needs to be a well-prepared and strategic process for making budget decisions and allocating resources, and we support devoting significant resources to reading, writing, and mathematics with the goal that all students will master those core competencies. However, we also believe that in Brookline, our community should be able to meet that bar while at the same time striving to offer more for our students. To succeed in the 21st century, our students will need not just routine knowledge and skills, but also the ability and confidence to approach and solve unstructured problems, to understand and make use of new information, and to take ownership of their own future learning. We urge you and the PSB central administration to not only reconsider any reductions to the ECS program, but instead to seek out ways to increase our investment in the type of learning that ECS supports. We urge better integration of a well-rounded education, including ample time devoted to science and social studies, and ready access to an ECS specialist for every PSB teacher. We hope you will continue to support ECS and work in partnership with us to build a community here in Brookline in which all students regularly experience rigorous, relevant, and engaging learning activities that inspire them to seek out and respond to challenges, to be a maker of knowledge and solutions, not just a consumer, and to continually reinvest in their own lifelong learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Murphy, is Scott here? And after Naomi is Nathan Spritz.
Hi, I'm Naomi Schweitzer. I'm a town meeting member and a former Pierce School Site Council member. My children have attended Pierce and BEEP at Pierce when it was still there, and also BEEP at the Lynch Center. I have a rising ninth grader, so heading to the high school, and our family has access to special education services in multiple of the K-8 schools, including using transportation. Through preschool connections, children's music and theater activities, children's sports, and Girl Scouts, I know children and families at all of our K-8 schools and Brookline High School, and I think almost all of the BEEP locations, and I am concerned about the proposed budget cuts on all of our children across the district. I have been following the budget presentations given at the school committee meetings over the last several months. We heard in the fall that a big deficit was looming, and then last week in the budget presentation, the budget gap was down to 2.8 million, and the district was proposing to close that gap through several measures, including cuts to special education and not hiring the 15 teachers and one school-based school administrator that were promised as part of the 2018 operating override passage. Central administration asked school principals to identify where they can make cuts, $200,000 for each K-8 school, and $800,000 for the high school. I did not hear any clear plans to examine central administration in the same way and make cuts there. Since 2015, we've added approximately 12 central office positions, with four vacancies filled this fall shortly before the budget deficits were announced. I don't think we need all of these central office positions when we don't have enough funds for teachers and other staff that work directly with children. There's also a $1.1 million budget line item that other folks have referenced called "other." I'm curious what "other" is, and do we need it? I do know that we need our teachers, paraprofessionals, special education teachers, guidance counselors, nurses, librarians, vice principals, and principals. These are the people that directly care for and teach our children 180 days a year for 32 hours each week. They are the ones at the center of a quality educational experience that get to know individual children and build classroom communities and school communities that are safe, welcoming, and filled with learning. I am asking you, do not cut teachers and other school-based staff. This is core to our children's education. Do not increase class sizes. Do not cut special education. How is this even possible when we are legally required to provide these services to children who need them? I am asking you to make sure that the planned growth of hiring 15 more teachers continues as planned, 10 teachers at the high school and five in the K-8 schools. If this does not happen, it is essentially a cut, given the increased enrollment coming in the next four years, especially at the high school. If this hiring does not happen, it will also diminish trust with the voters who approve these funds specifically to hire more teachers. Will they trust us the next time we ask for more operating funds? Thank you.
After Nathan is Alex Bachman.
I'm going to do my best. I yielded one minute before, so I'm going to do my best to do two. So I'm Nathan Spritz. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 16. I'm also the parent of two rising ninth graders at Baker. Budgets can be developed lazily, or they can be developed thoughtfully. Thoughtful budgets really prosecute priorities. We're entering the third year of an override, and that override passed in part because we knew the high school was going to grow in enrollment and that we were going to fund extra teachers there. We made promises. I knocked door-to-door on doors and promised that some of these positions were going to be filled. And I think that we should take that promise very seriously, but also, I think that facts can change on the ground. So we shouldn't just slavishly take a look at our old promises and try to keep them if things have really changed. Maybe it's more important to fund special ed. Maybe it's more important to fund some balance between special ed, general ed at the elementary schools, general ed at the high school. Let's do something thoughtful. I'm reminded what Neil Waschinsky said. Neil Waschinsky said that when we were prosecuting, when we were going through with that override three years ago, that we really had to keep our promises. If you cannot keep your promises because facts have changed, please do so very thoughtfully. Communicate very clearly about why the priorities have changed, and make sure that you have our residents, not just voters, but all of our residents behind you. And don't, please, 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 don't just use the money to fill budget gaps. We've got a lot better uses for our money here, and we can do a much better job. Thank you.
After Alex will be Jessica O'Keefe.
Hi, I'm Alex Bachman. I live at Sewell Ave. I've got two kids at Lawrence. I'm on IPAC with Eli, and thank you for your statement. I've heard a lot of great work out of this committee. Because of, you know, crisis that we're in, it's drawn a lot of attention, and I really appreciate the work you're doing. I've been to a number of these meetings, and in no small part, you know, owing to your patience and diligence, we're having a very thoughtful conversation. I think, as I think about the budget, I too have seen, you know, the number of natural responses to restricted means, which are, you know, the duck-and-cover, the, you know, the distract, the make-my-case-for-my-particular-interest, and then the logical, you know, looking for data to support decision-making. And I'd like to second some thoughts here, which I see both, you know, from the IPAC perspective, but also as a parent, and also as a person who works in, you know, data-related fields and so forth. Some of the things I would like to second are, firstly, that there is an interest in top-line growth. The fact that we fund operating off of override seems very problematic to me. I think we have a school district supported by a tax base that proportionally pays less than other higher-performing areas in the state. So I would ask all of us to advocate for top-line growth as well. In terms of looking at central office, I think that decision-making, as Stephen so well said, owes to good data, and one of the things that I would love more of is an understanding of what the central office is pushing towards with a variety of its data acquisition positions and priorities. I think there's probably a lot of value there, but I don't know what it is, and I don't even know what they're aiming for by collecting all this data. What do they intend to use it for? I think, you know, there has to be justification if choices have to be made, and without top-line growth, that will happen. And finally, to talk to the ECS piece, what I've come to understand is that these specialists, you know, it's under the rubric of enrichment and challenge, and it's a program that's gone through changes through the years, but it creates a possibility, and I'll wrap up very quickly as this is my final point, it creates the possibility for creating a fabric that cuts across, you know, classrooms, and which allows the opportunity in those areas where we feel most under pressure as parents of students, where the kids are, you know, under a threat of losing social studies and science time. So I would second Eli's statements about the importance of ECS, and to think of expanding resources there as having, you know, a synergistic effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica's next. Is Jessica here? So, Mariah.
Good evening, Mariah Obrega. I live on Bowker Street, and I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 4 and a former member of advisory committee. And I want to, actually, I want to say that one of my proudest credentials, in addition to being the parent of a ninth grader and a sixth grader and an almost user of BEEP services, is I am a former student of Ms. Davis at the high school, and I had ninth-grade honors math with her, and she was amazing, and actually got me from a unhappy C student, and she worked with me on the socio-emotional part of why I was unhappy, and got me to actually up into AP math for sophomore year. So I have to say that she's amazing. So thank you. You know, I think back to that, and I think to, I'm just reflecting on what you said, which is, we need to be doing -- which is, we need to be doing all we can to support teachers like you who helped students like me who were struggling emotionally and with the actual content, and how do we do that? And it's through empowering and making those teachers feel like they have a voice. And when I hear what the cuts are that are being proposed, particularly to the high school, I think that what we are doing is the exact opposite of that, which we are taking away the resources that teachers need with terms of time to spend with individual students, and we're talking about demoralizing them as we talk about a 20% growth or so at the high school. What does that look like for our teachers? And so I would very, very much like to stress that I am very concerned about the cuts to the planned growth additional teacher lines and what we can do to make sure that we are allowing Ms. Davis's of the future to help students like me. So, thank you.
That is the end of the list. Is there, we've got three minutes. If there's somebody else who wants to speak, who has not spoken. Okay, come forward. Give your name.
Thank you. My name is Charu. I have notes on my phone, so forgive me here. So my name is Charu. I have two kids, one at Lawrence and one at the high school. I lived, I've lived in Brookline for many years now. I've also served in the Lawrence School Site Council for five years, I think, and co-chartered for a couple of those, so I've been around. What I wanted to share today is I asked my high schooler, what do you think about class size? And my high schooler said, you know, sometimes I feel like they've hit the sweet spot, where we have enough kids in the class that we can have interesting conversations, but not too many, so the teacher pays each of us attention and engages with each of us in meaningful ways. If you can get a high school kid to tell you you've hit the sweet spot, and it has to do with teaching and class size, then we have been doing something right. So I urge you to keep that in mind when you think about the budget, when you think about staffing at the high school, when you think about planning for our enrollment growth, and when you think about the class size that my elementary school student is going to have in a few years. Thank you.
So that ends this session with, okay? Okay.
So my name, probably don't need a microphone. My name is Cindy Drake. I'm a town meeting member for Precinct 5. I don't have a child in the school right now, so she's getting her senior year of college. She was, which they do make it, I trust me. And she had an IEP when she was in second grade, too, and they identified it, and thank God the teacher did. I'm listening to a lot of what's been said today, and I'm so impressed by the emotion towards the teachers. This was not my dog during my day with Borgan. It was the principals. We had five of them at Lincoln during the time she was there. And then she gets to the high school just when the lead principal is leaving, and we get a new one. So these issues are new to me. But what's distressing, and it doesn't feel new, is that I'm hearing over and over again, why are we in this situation? You guys are asking questions that I would think you should be able to answer. You should have been given the data to answer these questions. And it feels like there's no formal process. Now, there may well be. I work for a consulting company, and we live, well, I used to work for them, I just retired. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous of being up here. You guys aren't an imposing group, but I'm just, I'm sort of feeling passionate about this also at the same time. The first thing we do is a work plan, so you know when everything's going to happen, and you have a schedule. So if you guys are going to have meetings on certain topics, you know you're going to have it, and what's going to be on it. It doesn't feel like that's happened here. I feel like we're at the 11th hour, and you're now discovering information that should have been given to you a month ago at minimum. And the fact that you can find and plug a hole of some, several million dollars in a budget in one session, and nobody really understands the implications of it other than teachers, and no one understands the light items, does not feel comfortable to me. So as someone who, again, I don't necessarily have a child dog in the show, but as someone who's perfectly happy to pay more taxes, because we're not going anywhere, I would feel much more comfortable doing so if I felt like the people who are making the decisions were well-informed about the decisions they were making. And I'm just not feeling that right now. You guys are smart people. You're great. We love what you're doing, but you've got to push back on this, too. So that's all I wanted to add.
Okay, thank you very much. Just a reminder that you're welcome to send emails and however else you want to communicate with us. We do read them all. I promise you that we do. Thank you very much. You're welcome to stay as long as you want. Our next presentation, Julie Seers, she'll take over.
So our next presentation, Erin Cooley, is going to lead us, and we have a presentation on our enrollment report. We had some questions about that tonight, and perhaps you'd be interested in staying and receiving the report. All right, we're going to go ahead and keep moving. So do we have a quorum? We do not have a quorum of us at the table. If a quorum of us could return to the table, that would be excellent.
Thank you, Helen.
All right, thank you for having me. So I'm just going to give kind of a quick introduction before we have Dr. McGivern from Cropper and McGivern here to discuss the anticipated enrollment forecast report. So just to give an update and maybe to kind of reflect back on interim superintendent's budget report from last week, he did give an update on enrollment that I just want to highlight here. So again, we're here today to talk about the enrollment forecasts that our consultant has reported. Mr. Lummis did indicate that we might have the MSBA enrollment projection number today, which unfortunately, we do not. We spoke to them as early as this afternoon, and they said soon was the message that we got from them. But we did get some initial numbers from them. And so while the methodologies that Dr. McGivern will talk about today and the MSBA differ, the initial numbers from the MSBA, and you'll see in Cropper's number today, do indicate that our enrollment is leveling off. And so we're projected or forecasted to remain stable around our current levels for the foreseeable future, while the high school will grow a little bit before stabilizing. So even with all that being said, in terms of our enrollment numbers as they currently stand, and thinking about those numbers stabilizing in the future, we do want to remind folks of the facility challenges that we currently have. Those are things that we're not forgetting and that you all talk, you know, hours and hours about in the last couple of months. So continued overcrowding currently at our schools, substandard facilities, particularly for students in our most vulnerable populations, outdated buildings like peers who are nearing their end of life, the need for additional classroom spaces for certain programs like special education and English learner ed programs, thinking about returning our BEEP classrooms to our K-8 schools, and then our office spaces for employees who provide essential services to students, families, and schools every day. Those are all some challenges that we're experiencing currently, and even with our, you know, projected, forecasted stabilization, we'll continue, you know, to have with the numbers we're currently at. So thinking about why we're here this evening, I want to talk a little bit about why we use enrollment forecasts or projections. You'll actually hear me, and probably already have heard me interchange the words, but Dr. McGivern will clearly explain the differences between those two. Previously, in Brookline, we've done more of the projecting. This report is more forecasting. Again, he's much more qualified to explain those differences than I am, but we use them as essential planning tools, right, to make informed decisions about operational costs, staffing, transportation, facility needs related to class sizes, grade configuration, staffing, and short and long-term planning about capital projects, programming services, and academic opportunities. As I mentioned, in the past, we in Brookline have used enrollment projections. I'm going to skip through the history of 2009 through 2014 and just talk a little bit about what's been happening in the last five or so years. Internally, we've had a group working from about the fall of 2016 through the fall of 2019 that developed our reporting. That really was the projection model, the cohort survival, K to, or sorry, birth-to-K progression. And that spiked a lot of conversation amongst you all and amongst the community about whether or not that's the right methodology to be using, especially given the historical insignificant growth that we've had the last 15 years here in Brookline. So what happened was we started a group that consists, and I'll talk a little bit about that on the next slide, consists of staff members from PSB, staff members from the town, and town meeting members. We call ourselves the Enrollment Projections Working Group, and the charge from the school committee and the town was that this group would provide recommendations to both the school committee and the town for enrollment forecasts and methodologies moving forward. And just a quick highlight of our members, I think all of which are here this evening, town meeting members. Cliff Brown is here, Nathan Spritz, is that how you say it? Spitz is here. Mike Tofol's also here. We have put, so myself, I'm also on the team, Megan Gany, who's the coordinator of registration and enrollment in PSB, Jed Farinbach, who's our GIS town manager. We have put a lot of time into this group. We spent, you know, months thinking about our own and testing our own methodology, talking with other districts, doing our own research, having meetings, having phone calls. And so I just want to thank everybody who has been a part of this group for the amount of time and really thoughtful work that they've put into this project. So in May, the superintendent identified recommendations that our group came up with. I'm going to just focus on the fifth one this evening, because that's what we're here for. We decided that we needed to hire an external consultant to identify and use a more complex methodology for our enrollment projections, forecasts, moving forward. Some of the reasons for this, that will be really clear, I think, when Dr. McGivern comes to present, is that we needed to find an approach that would best fit Brookline that included a variety of measures that we weren't able to include in our projections previously, things like fertility rates, mortality rates, migration, population age, home sales, housing conversions, construction, demographic trends. Those are things that we just don't have the capacity right now to do internally. And one of the things that I think is actually most useful in the report that you have and that we'll go over today, is that all of these pieces can be broken down by our individual attendance zones, and so we can look at the impact of our enrollment in different parts of our town, which you'll see today, too. So finally, we hired Cropper and McGivern in October. They have expertise in using demographic data to develop forecasts on enrollment. They're demographers, geographers, and planners. They use GIS, which is a mapping tool. You'll see some maps in the presentation to answer some longstanding questions. They have worked with hundreds of school districts across the country, even as close as Newton Needham and Wellesley. And internally, with the town, they've worked with our data team, our registration and enrollment team, the working group that I identified earlier, our town planning department, and our GIS manager. And so the gentleman that will be presenting the report to you today, Dr. Jerome McGivern, he has over 20 years of experience in projecting enrollments, population, and housing. You see there, he has a PhD in demography from Bowling Green. He was a state demographer for Indiana for a number of years, is a Fulbright Scholar Award winner, has testified before U.S. Congress, and really specializes in population enrollment analysis and projections, redistricting, policy planning, research methods. And so without further ado, here he is. Let me get his presentation set up for you all.
Thank you, Erin. The only thing I'd like to add to that, it's 30 years of experience. I'd like to remind me that I'm older than I really am, so.
You just got to stand in front of the mic.
Thank you. Thank you, Erin. I don't have tall people here. Men and chairperson, members of the board, thank you very much. Nice to be here this evening. The only thing I want to add is, it's interesting, it reminds me of a situation early in my career when I went to a presentation and had a budget presentation beforehand, a lot of people speaking, and then they stood up and said, well, now I'll hear a report from the demographer, and 80% of the people got up and left. So history repeats itself. I'm Jerome McGivern with McGivern Demographics, affiliated with proper GIS. And as Erin alluded to several times, the first thing, very important thing I want to point out, these are forecasts, not projections. Very, very big difference between the two. A projection is where you take past trends, usually year-to-year survivorship, second-to-third, third-to-fourth over a period of time, usually five years, create an algorithm, survivorship, and use that to literally project into the future. Very quick, easy, simple to use. Up until about the mid-1990s, about the only thing you had for enrollment projections was cohort survival. The only problem with a projection is, the only way a projection can be correct is what's happened over the last five years or so replicates itself over the next five or 10, which almost never happens. These are forecasts. It's a two-step procedure. The first thing we do is a full population forecast for each one of your attendance areas, population zero to four, 85-plus. We do a complete demographic profile of each attendance We do a complete demographic profile of each attendance area, fertility, mortality, migration, age structure, housing tenure, very important for this district, existing home sales, new housing unit construction, any variable we can lay our hands on, geocoded data with your enrollment, and we build a population forecast model specific to each elementary attendance area. The results of that population forecast then drives the enrollment forecast. So it's not your past demographic trends, but your future demographic trends and composition, which are going to dictate what your enrollment's going to be over the next five or 10 years by attendance area. Now, anytime you're doing the forecast, you have to have assumptions. It's a very key and first step. These are broad socioeconomic demographic parameters, so to speak, that if we're, if these forecast assumptions hold, we should be within plus or minus 2% of the district total going through the 10 years, plus or minus 3% at the school level. Think of it as a confidence interval. Stay in that band. You're always going to have noise in there, a little high, a little low, but that's the band we're shooting for. It stays constant for the 10 years of the forecast. And I don't want to go through all of them. I do want to go through the very key ones. And number one is B, the 30-year fixed rate for home mortgages stays within 5% or below 5% over the next 10 years. Why is it so important? It drives your housing market. The backbone of your housing market is not new home construction, it's existing home sales, okay? And for that, we use Zillow and Realty Track. We can get home sales down to the parcel level, how it's been on the market, what price it was sold for, its size, we have the data back to 2009. You have it for any area across the United States, very, very specific, looking for closures, what to have two data sources. If you use Realty Track, go home tonight, type in Realty Track, put your address in, you get a little free promo for the area, you'll be able to see who your neighbors are behind on their mortgages, great way to spice up next cocktail party. Anything about your home is public domain data. It's all up on the internet now. Interestingly, blast, or November of 18, we saw the 30-year fixed rates go above 5% for the first time in, geez, almost 10 years now. So home sales just dropped precipitously. Then Jerome Powell lost his backbone, started cutting rates all over the place, were now at about 5 point, about 4.2. Why is it so important? On the supply side, it doesn't really affect it that much, but on the, on the demand side, buyers, above 5% starts to be a drag for people getting home mortgages. So I think we're going to probably stay below this rate for a key time, but that is one of the number one assumptions. Which goes to the F, existing home sales, 110 per year. That's over 1,000 housing units. And when we get to age structure, you'll see why it's so important. A lot of the households in the school district, what we call empty nest, still the original occupants have been there for 20, 30 years, but don't have any children in school. And most housing turnover occurs in their 70s. So that's a key number. You're tracking about 100 to 110 right now. If it goes above that, it's a benefit. If it goes below that, then you're going to have some trouble, so.
Could you just explain what benefit and trouble means?
In about two slides.
Oh, okay.
That's why, because they kind of go through the whole thing. It all kind of ties together, okay? But that's a good point. Glad you brought it up. Existing home sales, not distressed, it means they don't have underwater mortgages, can't exceed 20%. You're far, far below that right now. Tying into that, housing turnover rate remains at a current existing level, okay? It's driven by the households over the age of 70. Most people don't downsize due to retirement, okay? You'll see a slight uptick, about 8% to 12% will downsize and move to Florida or warmer climate, about 8%, 10% will go to assisted living centers. The main driver of turnover is when one of the spouses dies or both lose the ability to drive. Then you start seeing large numbers of turnover. So the number of homeowners in their 70s will dictate the number of homes going on the market. Very, very strong correlation on that. All planned, plaid, and approved, that's a key one, permitted and approved, developments, build-out completed by '28, occupied by '29, and these are the specific ones we have included from Towns Planning Department, number of units, build-out scenario, and location that we're including in the, in the forecast. Now, the number one predictive variable of population housing change is not birth, it's not death, it's not even migration. It's the distribution of your population across the life course, what the ages are. And this is Brookline from 2000. I brought this up to kind of show how it stayed the same over time. You have a large population, college students, young professionals in their 20s, okay, that live in, particularly in the north. And then, I'll go through the whole thing. Here's how you read one of these things. Zero to four, that's your preschool population. That's your elementary, your middle, your high school. 20 to 34-year-olds, what we call family formation ages. 80% of all births occur to women between the ages of 20 and 34 years old. It's not birth rate, it's number of women in prime childbearing age that dictates what your future births are going to be. You get a total fertility rate of nine, you don't have women in prime childbearing age, you're not going to have that many births. 35 to 54 are the ages where most people have kids in school. Most of the people that were here half an hour ago and left are between the ages of 35 and 54, okay? 59, 55 to 69, what we call the empty nest ages, okay? Probably still have homeowners that have been there for 20, 30 years in most cases, but their kids have all graduated from high school and moved away. 70 and over, we call the turnover ages, okay? Now, normally, this is what kind of makes Brookline unique, if you had this many people in prime childbearing age, you would see a huge zero to four bar and even larger five to nine. The reason why you don't is because a lot of those people are in apartments, they are college students or young professionals, they haven't started their households yet, they haven't started having their kids, all right? And if you move forward, if you go forward to 2010, you'll know, and I'll kind of go back and forth, you'll see where that bubble of population stays the same. They come in, go to school, graduate, move away, start the careers, let the families move away. That population, particularly in the north, stays put. But you'll notice, if we go backwards here, those people in their 40s and 50s are now in their 60s, late 50s and 60s in 2010. When the 2020 census results come out, by the way, that'll be April or May of 2021, according to current schedules, these people will now be up in their 70s. You're going to have more householders in their 70s in turnover ages going into the future. So those existing home sales, which has been a relatively smaller proportion of your housing market the last 10 or 15 years, will start becoming a larger proportion of it. You'll see more people moving in in their 30s and 40s. This population in their 20s and, or early and late 20s will pretty much stay the same. You'll notice there's a slight surplus, zero to four, about five to nine. So you can do, what you do here is you can track that population. Without any in-migration, your elementary enrollment should have gone up over that five-year period, 10 to 15, not because of in-migration, but because you had a larger cohort aging into it, if they stayed put. So that's how we kind of, and you'll see a slide on that later, too, how we measure that over time, compare it to the census population, see if it's in or out migration. Now, we also refer to this as your demographic fingerprint, because no two geographic areas have the exact same size, shape, distribution of their population. And the two examples, I picked purposely, one is Driscoll, this is Driscoll 2000, and Driscoll 2010. You'll notice the distribution doesn't change that much, okay? Reason I picked Driscoll is Driscoll is your attendance area, has the largest proportion of rent or occupied households. Owners and renters have two different dynamics, okay? Renters tend to be younger, because they're younger, they tend to be poorer, tend to have, if children, more preschoolers, they move on average every two years. Homeowners tend to be older, and for the very nature of, because they're older, richer, or wealthier, I should say, tend to have completed their family formation and move on average every 13 years. Two completely different dynamics to them. So the Driscoll, that's one reason why you don't see a lot of change between 2000 and 2010. The pyramid, it's dominated by rental properties, in this case, a lot of them young professionals and college students, not having very many kids. The second example is Heath, okay? And Heath has a much smaller distribution of their population in their 20s, but much higher in the 40s and 50s. And if you go to 2010, its growth is much more even across the district. And it's also where you tend to have your highest proportion of single-family attached homes, completely different dynamic. It's where you have to look at each individual attendance area on its own demographic dynamics and characteristics. And you can't use district-wide trends generalized to subareas, because they may be wildly different. I have many charts on that. Forecasted population change for the district for the 10-year period this decade, about Not bad for, actually from Massachusetts. So the total number's not changing that much, but the composition of that population's changing rather dramatically. And a wide range from 5% at Coolidge Corners down to half percent at Lincoln. So again, the growth and change rates are going to be different from area to area. One of the more interesting, this is probably what people find fascinating here, only 20% or 25% of the households in the school district have under 18 population, and that includes preschoolers. If you looked at just households with school-age population, it's about 20%, okay? And the household size, 2.27. A very, very crude measurement on this is mom, dad, whatever the point is, is kids. So you're looking at, on average, about 0.27 kids per household, and this is 2010. But look at the range in here. It goes from as low as 2.05 at Lawrence to as high as 272 and Baker, and 276 in Heath. Not surprisingly, those are the two attendance areas have the highest proportion of owner-occupied households. And the ones with a lot of apartments, Pierce, Lawrence, Coolidge Corner, much, much lower, much farther below the district's average. So again, you've got two different dynamics going on, the northern part of the district and the southern part of the district, very, very different, different demographically. Homeowners, 35, 54, these are the ones that tend to have kids in school, 32%, and that's dropping. The good news goes back to the question you were talking about, ma'am. 20% of the households over the age of 65, which will be turning over in the future, but again, a wide range, 30% at Heath, all the way down to 16% in Driscoll, 17% in Runcle. So you've got a different dynamic going on in each one of the elementary attendance areas. And it also ties in with homeownership. About half of the district, about half are owner-occupied, but again, 62, 80% in Heath, you know, and in low areas, you see 38 in Coolidge Corners. So some are dominated by owners, some are dominated by renters. So you're going to see different dynamics in different areas, hence different trends, what's driving them. I've done 1,300 of these presentations in my career, which means, yes, I've sat through 1,300 school board meetings, and which explains my beard and hair. I've never had a member of the public or the board bring up an issue that is not a valid issue for population forecasting. The problem is, they only bring up one, two, or three. In reality, there's 15 or 20 different variables that will affect your population enrollment, some positive, some negative, working at different paces of magnitude to different areas of the district. They don't really grasp the complexity of it, okay? They can always tell me the positive ones, they can never tell me the negative ones, okay? And I'll give you both on this one. Single-person households, not a shock. A third of your households are single-person households. But again, that runs the gamut from, you got 19% in Baker, not surprisingly, that's where single-family attached homes are at, as high as 40 in Lawrence, okay? And that was probably the one dumb question I've got in my career, was someone asked me once, how many kids can they expect out of single-person households? And then, single person over 65, these are the ones with the greatest potential of turnover in the next, next 10 years. And it's 13% down to 6% in Runcle, 10% for district average. But you're going to have more households turning over in the next 10 years, as you have more over 70 empty nesters selling their homes and, and moving away, allowing new young families to move in. Elementary enrollment change, more on this, but basically, you have a slight gain over the next five years, and a stronger gain over the next, but it's very, very unevenly distributed across the district. Your big gainers are going to be Baker, Coolidge, Heath. We have both construction and housing turnover going on. Both those variables working in conjunction with each other. The areas that don't have that, you have your decline. Driscoll, Pierce are the two big ones. So another way to keep in focus here, and this is a very, very key point for your, for your planning, is your, like, your elementary enrollment may not change that much over a 10-year period, the distribution of your students within the district will change dramatically, okay? And that's always a challenge for school districts, because buildings are static. Once you build them there, you're stuck with them there for 50, 60, 70 years, okay? But the distribution of your students by area will turn over every 15 or 20 years. And that's always a challenge for school districts, you know, even, even ones that densely populated as, as Brookline is. And Brookline is a very densely populated area, okay? Now, this is one of my favorite pieces of data from 2010 census. It's single year by age. And what we can do is you can correlate this with individual school years. And what we're trying to do here is isolate the cohort effect. And this is also a great reason to show why, why trend analysis doesn't work, okay? In 2010, the six-year-olds, that was your first grade. That's your second, third, fourth, fifth. Five years later, in 2015, these under ones are now six years old or close to six. That's your kindergarten, that's your first grade, second, third, fourth, fifth, and you can track it through time. A great example here is Baker. See how the sixth-grade cohort, 116, drops to 78, then goes back up to 102? Well, if you're doing trend analysis and you see a big drop, oh, it must be moving out, my first thing is, no, maybe it's a small cohort going through. And it just pops back up. So we can look at this going, well, you should have a 30-student or 40-student drop that year in Baker, just because you have a small cohort coming in. If you don't, it must be in migration. Conversely, the next year, you should have a 20-student increase. If it's more or less than that, that difference is migration. So by identifying the cohort sizes, you can identify what's migration and what's just cohort size, okay? Whereas trend analysis will just take that trend and either take it up or down depending what your launch year is. Now, we do it for all the elementaries, but we've done it for, oh, my apologies, I thought it was show better than this. What we do is, is we take here, this is a district-level example of that, and might be, if you have a printout, it might be easier to see. And as I mentioned, this is your, from 2010, this is your first grade enrollment, calculate a comparison here of your actual enrollment with the census number and calculate a proportion. Now, no school district draws 100% of the students. You have homeschool, you have private, you have charters, things like that. So you don't expect to be 100%. But once you establish that number, you know, the next year, they're, here, kindergarten, they're now first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, all the way up to ninth grade. Hard to believe, your five-year-olds in 2010 are your freshmen in high school today. And you can check and see how the percentages change. And if it goes up, it's either in migration or transfer in. If it goes down, it's out migration or transfer out. And you can do a year-to-year for each grade cohort and see, and the geocoding is what makes this work, okay? I'll get to that in a second, too. You'll notice here, in most of your... You'll notice here, in most of your, particularly in the early part of the decade, you had in-migration or at least holding steady. But once they get to, like, grade five, like, most inner-ring suburbs that have a lot of apartments in them, you start seeing people migrate out usually to the suburbs, okay? This is how you actually measure this, and you can then start building an age-specific migration model from this, because it's been my experience over the years that when a third grader moves, they tend to take the whole family with them. Not always, but in most cases. And then, you'll, you see a little, some differences here in the high school grades. Your dropout rate, which is like minuscule, most districts would kill for your high school dropout rate, a very, very small factor. But then again, most kids don't move during high school, you know, that's, your eighth grade population's pretty static after that. You've seen places where the parents will, if one of them takes a job someplace else, they'll stay back so the kid can finish high school. That's how important it is now. But this is how we start measuring the individual, by area, too, this is district level, what your year-to-year migration's been by cohort over time. So, you'll also notice that your base numbers also stay remarkably consistent, too. So, you do well, but you do have outmigration to other suburban areas. From here, probably, you know, Wellesley, Needham, some to Newton, some go out to farther Framingham. A lot of it depends on parental decision-making, usually by house availability and commute to work, particularly in this area.
Go back to that, we had a couple of questions on our slide. Could you go back before we go on?
I'm sorry?
Could you go back one slide? Sharon, you had a question?
Yeah. Thank you. I'm wondering how methodologically you dealt with the problem of buffer zones. I don't know if you guys were using buffer zones as you were kind of reviewing these analytics, and if some of these buffer zones were actually people outmigrating from one buffer to another?
Once again, you're a slide ahead of me.
Oh.
Okay. That's why I say, hold till I get done, okay? What makes this work, and while you couldn't do it before, is GIS, okay? Because the key to this is being able to correlate what's going on in a specific geographic area with your demographic information. And you brought, ma'am, a very good point with the buffer zones, which are the bane of good planning, anyway. If you've got kids floating all over the district, you can't really correlate your trend, you're putting what we call systematic error in there. With GIS, you could put them back in their home attendance area. So, we take your nonbuffer-zone areas, you know, they're all on the map in here, too. Given those areas, how many live in the district or that particular attendance area go someplace, how many attend it? And this is where we pick them up. So, the green numbers are the children who both live and attend, in this case, Baker. And along the side here, this is where they attend school, so seven-hundred-and-fifty attend Baker, six-fifty-six, if my eyes are not playing tricks on me, live and attend that area, two from Coolidge, two from Heath, two from Lincoln, Pierce, forty-nine from out of, or forty, or ninety from out of district for one-hundred. And that's how we see, and not only it solves the buffer zone problem, it also solves the out-of-district problem as well, okay? And then, from Baker, you've got seven-sixty-one that live in Baker, and then, one that go to Coolidge, seventy-one that go to Heath, thirteen, these are buffer areas, you know, we have a buffer area, you have larger numbers. And you can do that for each one of your elementary zones and the buffer areas, so we can see who actually lives in this defined geographic area, how many live and attend in that area, and how many are going someplace else. Being able to bring them back into their home attendance area and filter out the out-of-district is what allows us to correlate enrollment with population, household characteristics and the like. Did that answer your question, ma'am? Yep.
Well, I have a, and it's raised, I don't understand the answer to her question now. So, you're saying that if you live in Baker District, like, so Baker has three buffers?
Right.
So, where, if you lived in a Heath-Baker buffer zone, where did you put them on here?
Well, there's your map, okay? Here are the defined boundaries. So, this is like Coolidge, this is like Driscoll here, okay? The buffer zones have you been assigned to Driscoll or in the Coolidge Corners, there's a buffer zone between the two. So, this is the line we used to delineate the boundary, okay? So, you've got some kids in the buffer zone here that, actually, they live in Coolidge, so if they go to Coolidge, they're kind of in there, but if they live in this area and they go to Driscoll, they're counted as a student coming from out of the attendance area. So, what we did was, we basically assigned the buffer areas to its, quote, "home attendance area." And then, go back to this, given those boundaries, this is how the live-attend matrix works out. So, in the example, Coolidge Corner, there's ninety-nine students that live in that geographic area, okay, that go someplace else, okay? And anytime you see the large numbers like Lawrence, well, that's probably a buffer zone, same thing with Driscoll, anytime it's double-digit numbers, most of the case. A great one is Pierce and one-hundred-and-twenty that live in Pierce that go to Lawrence. Again, that's probably a buffer zone. So, that's how you kind of alleviate that problem, or at least, like, issue, still a problem, but the bigger thing was also to bring out the out-of-district kids, because you didn't want them, I guess, the word I would use is contaminating the demographic data for the district because they're not, they're not living in the district. Yeah, I got to think of better.
What do you think about out-of-district?
Skewing, how about skewing? That's a better one. Skewing the data.
So, define out-of-district?
People who don't live inside Brookline and come in.
Who come in, not go out?
No.
Yes. Not private-school kids, not, okay, that's what I was trying to understand.
We're just trying to figure out where your students are coming from. So, they, yeah, they would definitely skew the results. Yeah, I got another term coming up you're not going to like either, so, no, it's called prime dying age. So, basically, this is what makes it work. So, you've got, again, the green numbers are the ones who both live and attend in those geographic areas. These are the ones living and going someplace else, these are the ones coming in from someplace else. You've got a lot of students floating around the district because of your buffer zones, okay? So, very, very popular in planning in New England, you don't hardly see them anyplace else in the country except New England school districts, but that's neither here nor there. The heat maps, this is again from proper GIS's mapping crew, it shows the distribution of students, and the red area is, the darker the color, the more kids you see, so you can see where the concentrations are at in each one of the attendance areas, and there's one of your buffer zones, too. And of course, you get farther away from the area and the building, you see few and fewer kids coming in. That's Driscoll, another example here is Heath. Again, you see where, again, concentrations of students are at within that attendance area, up close to the border, basically there and there where your two attendants are. Not only is Brookline very densely populated, within the district, you have very heavy But if you draw a line roughly, almost Route Nine, not quite, but somewhere around there, you have many, many more apartments north of Route Nine and a higher proportion of single-family attached south of Route Nine. It really is, demographically speaking, almost two completely different districts, okay? These are, this is from the town of Brookline, planning, we have a very set rule on this we've used for years. If it's under-construction, planned, flat, approved, ready to go, closed, we'll put it in. If it's still speculative, we don't, okay? This is in all of our districts. So, anything that says maybe or on hold or unknown, we don't put in there, okay? We learned our lesson on that in the two thousand and eight, nine, ten housing crunch. Still have pipe fields all over the place. You can do what we call scenario forecast, we used one for Needham, that said, okay, if they build the overlay project in two thousand and twenty-five, what would it do? But that's, again, speculative, you know, so, as our standard forecast, we don't put them in unless it's actually underway. So, these are the ones in yellow or the ones being cleared, they're also listed in the assumptions section. Now...
Do you want all the questions, do you want all the questions at the end? Do you want questions at the end, or if we have questions specifically about the what you're talking about, do you want them at the time?
Oh, hell, I guess Muz will do it now.
On this one, who made the determination, so typically in Brookline, as we've talked about how to consider construction projects, we've said that if it's permitted, that it will be considered in our numbers for school. So, this is our on-hold or unknown, what we're calling that is a little different than has been usual Brookline practice? Is that a determination that you made in conjunction with talking to the planning department in Brookline, or this is just on an analysis that you did within Cropper?
In other words, who's to blame for this? So, that's my rules, my forecast, my rules. Like I said earlier, you can put those in, you know, it's not best practices by any stretch of the imagination. I've seen too many school districts burned by putting everything in there and then wildly overestimating their population and enrollment. It's, again, best practices to only use what you know is going to happen, okay? But again, having said that, you've got to have enough variation, just assuming you've got two-hundred-and-ten roughly existing home sales, that's going to have much more variability than your building. Also, the thing about that, too, is what's your yield going to be on that? And also, in your report, you'll see there's some yield analysis on your apartments that have been built. All of them are below point-six school-age kids per housing unit, which is pretty low. So, you can do a forecast with all of these in here, but I'd have to professionally, ethics demand that I would have to say, you're drastically increasing the systematic error in the forecast. I could not guarantee a plus or minus two percent band around the forecast result because you're speculating that all of this is going to be built, so...
I guess, I hear you on the variability, and there are other factors that go in, but there are some projects that have, would have huge implications on the school, on the school. And so, by excluding them, especially if they're very far along in the process, but like this one where you have a couple that say developer has not indicated construction plans. If the developer has all of the permits necessary that they could go down tomorrow and file for that to start construction, I mean, do we reach out and find out whether they're planning on doing that? Is it, I mean, there, that's a big factor that has, and some of the developments are so closely populated to a specific school that what is happening or not happening at that school...
Well, one thing I've found in my research of Brookline, and we'll go on these, it depends on where they're going to build them, okay? My favorite one here is residents of Brookline Hancock Village, which is in the south, much, much different impact than anything going up the Coolidge Corner. This is going to draw more, we call it traditional residents, people who are going to live, work in the area, have kids, again, these are family formation areas, okay, where they're going to start their families, okay? The ones in the north tend to draw more for the young professionals and the college students, where the yields up there are so much lower, all right? So, yeah, they have a much bigger impact. But, I always tell people on this, apartments have a whole different dynamic. You don't come out of college and buy a house, you come out of college and you rent an apartment. We call them family formation areas. So, people will go through, well, I've driven through this apartment complex and there's tons of kids, and they're absolutely right, the bulk of them are preschoolers. And even here in unique Brookline, most people don't want to raise their kids in an apartment. So, in that oldest one, gets about third, fourth, four years old, maybe even first or second grade, they're looking for a house in the suburbs. And housing prices here, I can start our homes in here, what, nine-hundred-thousand dollars, okay? It's going to take some serious cash, particularly if you're a college student carrying a bunch of student loan debt, to get a mortgage, which is why you're seeing them going out to the farther-out suburbs. When we moved up here twenty years ago, and we looked in the house, we started in Concord, we wound up in Gardner, you know, those far hours we could go to finally find something we could afford, okay? A lot of people have that same problem around here, too, because they can't afford, it might be more convenient to live this close to the city and the jobs, they just can't afford to get a mortgage for it, so they're going out. Same with these apartments, all these preschoolers are here, are not going to be in your school because the parents are going to want to go to single-family attached homes someplace else. So, you do two things here, you tend to overestimate, the population size is going to have a positive impact, but it's not going to have that much impact in the enrollment. Ma'am?
I just wanted to kind of press on that a little bit because, at least in the community where I live in, you have a lot of fully-formed families with forty-somethings and a pile of school-age kids who are living in apartments precisely because houses are nine-hundred-thousand dollars plus.
Right.
And my understanding is that there's a growing trend towards not homeownership, towards rentership, towards urbanization, and towards, you know, sort of making accommodations for school-age kids within the context of rental living. So, I kind of want to support Julie's point. I don't know that that kind of, I guess, my question for you as a demographer is, we have this, we have a lot of sort of conflicting data points here in the district that a lot of us don't really understand because we seem to see kind of a, you know, an unusual demographic trend here where there's all of these fully-formed families who are urbanizing and not homemaking.
Right. Let me go down the line on that, since you asked about nine questions in there, okay? Basically, a lot of what you said is true, and in Brookline, and particularly here in New England, which is at least two standard deviations across the mean from the normal, regular world, okay? It's, I don't want to go down that road.
I didn't say one good or bad.
That's a value judgment, I'm not going to do it. Okay. You're citing about three or four what we call USA Today trends, okay? And the USA Today is true, no, it's not. There are more people, particularly millennials, staying in urban areas, okay? Why are they doing that? There was another, the same article came out, showing that they are staying in there. Why are they here? They can't afford a house, they don't like living in the cities, okay? Eighty percent wish they could get out of there. This area, because housing prices are so high, okay, you do see higher yields of middle school and high school students in your apartments, you just mentioned it, okay? Now, it's higher than national average, higher than the state average, because they like living here, okay? It's from point-four to point-five. You're going to see more here, but you don't want to overgeneralize that trend, okay? And as we saw in our research and that year-to-year change, you do have people flowing out of here with preschool-age kids, middle school kids, high school, the whole nine yards, if they can. If they can't get a mortgage, they're not going to move. Also in that article is, you may have seen the same, where the average college graduate comes out with forty-thousand dollars in student loan debt. What the article didn't tell you was the average college graduate marries a college graduate, is eighty-thousand dollars in household debt. That, they're not staying in apartments because they like living there, they're staying in apartments and they can't afford to go anyplace else, okay? Particularly with housing prices here. Also buried in the article down there, too, is Massachusetts, this area, Brookline in particular, has some of the lowest fertility rates in the country. Two-point-one replacement level, you're at one-five and dropping. Now, part of that's because you've got so many college kids in here that don't stay, you know, they're, it's a rule of their population. It's one of the reasons why I quit teaching colleges, the only person aging on campus was me, you know, the students all stayed the same age. Same thing here, so you're going to have that constant rollover in your, particularly your northern apartment areas. That's why I pointed out Hancock Village as an example, that's in the south. There you might see more stay longer, have more kids in high school and all that, but that's only one-hundred-and-seventy-five of them, that's about half. So, you have a whole different dynamic down there. It also is the same area that's got a lot of housing turnover going on at the same time. Of course, now that Tom Brady's left, everybody's going to leave, you know? So, so what I can say on that.
His kids were in the school to begin with, but.
Oh, that's saying. Yes, ma'am.
Just another trend that hasn't been mentioned. Boston has some of the worst traffic in the country.
Right. That's why I think your fertility rate's so low.
Could be. But driving in from the outskirts, shall we say, can take such a long time that, that there has been news saying that people are moving right into the city because it's simply not worth spending all that time driving.
When I lived in Gardner, I worked in Concord. It took me an hour and 20 minutes to get to work every day and an hour and 20 minutes to get home. And I'm happy to say that in the 15 years I have left, your drivers have not gotten any better. So it's still a nightmare. And, but again, also on that trend is most households now are two income. Okay? So you have to consider both people's commute. Now, if you're, if you're both living in downtown Boston, Brookline's a great place to live. If one of you is working in Worcester and one of you is working in Andover, it's not a good place to live. Okay? You have to consider the commute of both people. If we had stayed here, we would split the difference and, and lived out in Worcester. You know? So, but if you're both young professionals and you're both living and working in downtown or you're both working at the university or something, you know? It's a good place to live. But if you're not, then you're not going to want to fight that traffic, you know? Going the other direction as well. So that is, that is a, a key point. Cause if you, I can't imagine trying to work, live up here without your public transportation system, which is better than, you know, 95% of the areas in the country. So I live in Charlotte, we don't have public transportation. It's a night, you think it's bad here, you gotta drive down there. They're armed southerners, not good.
I guess I just wanted to press a little bit more on, as we were talking about the developments that were not included and the different, when we're looking at Hancock Village in particular and the, the impact that we, that we have seen historically about the number of students that are coming from those units and it just being perhaps different than in different parts of town. That, that one has been excluded. And Chestnut Hill Development, Chestnut Hill Realty has made statements at their planning meetings about the residents of South Brookline, that they will begin building the Pudding Stone property next spring. And so just in meetings in the last few weeks, they have been telling all of the residents and the community this. And so to leave that out has such a significant.
Well, they, they weren't saying that last November when we were calculating. That's why. Well, we don't know. It's, we don't know. Well, now they're all saying we're going to go forward and they may. Okay? And 230 units, well, you know, take the one bedrooms out, the two bedrooms maybe. It's those two, the three and four bedrooms are you going to get the school age kids out of? Okay? Ma'am?
Thank you. Did you do an analysis of in Brookline, the family sizes given different unit sizes? There's a lot of anecdotal evidence
Right.
that we do have, as Dr. Brown said, more families living in one bedroom apartments.
Oh, yes, indeed.
So I'm wondering if, that we have data on that? Because I think that would be helpful to inform a lot of experiences. So, and is that different from other towns or is it pretty much the same as other towns?
Pretty much same as anybody else on that one.
Okay.
Yeah, the four generations of immigrants living in the one bedroomed apartment. Yeah, we hear that all the time. In your report, we got the three, three examples here. Coolidge Corner, Runcle, Heath, Baker. Yeah, the Coolidge Corner is my favorite one. Yield, school age yield of point four kids per unit.
I guess I'm asking by, by number of bedrooms. So I know, I saw that, page 40. I was just wondering if you had it broken down by number of bedrooms. So like, so again, there's anecdotal evidence that it ran, and I think it would be helpful to put data against it, that we have more families who are cramming into smaller spaces in order to live this close to Boston and in order to live in Brookline, in order to do all these things. There's some data around that.
There's, there's two points on that. You know, if they were all crammed in like that, you would see higher yields. But again, go back to this whole anecdotal thing. They see these kids all over the place.
No, I got it. I know the anecdotal piece. I'm asking about the data. So we don't have it broken down by, by number.
Well, we have each unit broken down. We have mean number of bedrooms. I mean, like specific ones, no, we don't have specific examples like that. We, there's, there's no place to get that data from. Okay? But again, I'll go back to the point, the people will see kids all over the place. They don't designate between their preschoolers or school age kids. We're looking at school age kids. Okay? And again, there, I'm sure there are housing units out there that they have one bedroom and, and five kids in them. We see that everywhere. Okay? What people aren't telling you about is all the ones that see the housing units with no kids in them. Okay? And go back to, again, fundamental point, three quarters of the housing units in this district don't have any kids in them. Okay?
So we looked at that, so you, you looked at, did you look at that? As you, did you look at specific housing developments that exist currently and see?
Yeah, that's, that's, in fact, in Heath, we looked at five different ones. That's why you have the, the net yield is only like two, but about point three, you know?
Page 40 is the real report. I mean, the poll report, not the real report.
Now, if, if, if we wanted to, if, if the district wanted to and was willing to pay for it, you know? You can go through every housing unit here. We picked a sample of ones that have a lot of college kids in it, ones that don't. Ones in the north, ones in the south, tried to have a nice mix here. So you, you're, we're not cherry picking pro or con. We're trying to give you a nice broad view of it. And your highest one is point six, and that's in Runcle. Okay? And it's fundamental is you've got a lot of housing units that don't have kids in it. And if they do have kids, they're preschoolers. Okay? And if you had all those preschoolers, they would age in the system. They're not. You do have out migration from the area. Now, if Pudding Stone comes online, particularly with 230 units, you know, you're, you're going to see an impact out of it. Okay? But when we did the forecast in November, at that point, it was up in the air. So we didn't include them in.
Do we have a way within the report to project out what that impact would be if it had it? So are you showing, I'm not seeing a direct enough, like as we look at 455 Harvard, for example, where do we see how many children you've estimated would be coming from that housing unit?
Which one?
Like four, it's the third one in Yellow Down, 455 Harvard? Or I'm not sure it's.
455 Harvard.
Yep. How many kids do we then assume are coming?
Specifically coming out of that one? I, I don't have that in the report. I've got it, they're all bunched together, they're within the pop and enrollment forecast. Probably about four.
And so from residents of South Brookline, how many are you estimating are coming from that?
Residents of, um, okay, that's in Baker area. About 25.
You're estimating that 25 children are coming.
School age children.
How do you do the estimate? How do you, how does one, what is the algorithm or whatever it is you use to, to estimate how many students would come out of a housing?
If it's been in existence for, you know, more than five or six years, we can use a combination of census data, which gives us a number of housing units. The city has a very, very good count of housing units by block. Each area, we back it up with that, make sure the numbers are the same. Maps geocoded students down to the address level. So that tells us your actual enrollment coming out of that area, elementary, middle school, high school. So I can get all three of those. And we can also look over time and see how many of your preschool age kids that were counted in 2010 actually show up in your school 2015. That's how we can calculate a migration rate for that too. That's how we know you've got out migration. They're either going to school or they could have gone to private, could have gone to homeschool.
Or they went back to their countries where they came from.
Or go back to the home country where they came from. Cause it works just like other than the college population, tends to roll over. You know, they, they tend not to be permanent residents. So basically, we're looking at that. And because you have such a high proportion of not only college students, but graduate students, you know, which do tend to have more, more than undergraduates at least, maybe marry, may have kids, may have come from continuing study programs. They're actually in their late twenties, early thirties, things like that. But it's again, a transient population is in and out. It's, so it kind of fits the apartment mold. They're there, but it keeps rolling over. Okay? So.
I don't know if you're finished with your report?
Oh, no, I'm even close. So.
I have a question about private school students.
What?
I had asked this question actually from the committee to ask you. What I've, from my experience on the committee, and I've been here like 27 years, we've had about 13% kids who go to private school out of Brookline. How has that changed? Do you have it graphed over the last 10, 20 years? So that we could see, you know, if they're, I mean, 2008, I think that changed.
Pretty constant. It was lower 10 years ago. Oh, eight, oh, nine, 10, 11, because of the, the recession. And then it went back up to your historic average. It stays about 13%. Massachusetts has a larger than average private school, particularly those of the Catholic schools, which by the way, was where my son went when he was up here. You know, but stayed, it stays pretty constant. It tends to be more, not so much parental choice, but do they have the resources for it? Cause it's not cheap. Okay? The transfers are the bigger problem on it. But that, that, that number stayed, I'd say within point and a half of that average over the last five or six years.
Do you have a graph of that?
No, I don't have a graph of that. So we'll just call it anecdotal. So. If they do build Pudding Stone and they decide to do it, and we need to build out scenario on that. And I have no idea, they still haven't got an answer from them on how long it's going to take them to build that. I've heard anything from 18 months to three years. It will have an impact somewhat, but not near as much as people think it's going to have.
Did you look at the yield that exists from the current Hancock Village apartment specifically? To get an idea of what the, I know that we're forecasting and not predicting, but that does seem like a good predictor for how many students might come from those properties.
Current Hancock Village?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it's got five different sections because it's in five different census blocks. And it ranges anywhere from point 5.2 to point 1.6, depending on what part of the complex you're in. Which also tied into price, you know? There's a rule in demography for apartments and houses. As price goes up, number of kids go down. It's like income. As income goes up, number of kids go down. Yes, ma'am?
Going the other way, in terms of ages? We just substantially expanded for, in a short term, for a short term period, our preschool capacity.
Right.
Do we have a lot of preschoolers coming?
Why are you always two slides ahead of me? Stop that. Okay? Have we beaten this to death yet?
Yes.
Y'all think it should be in there, I don't think it should, but we'll, by the way, I should mention this right now. We do this for all of our school districts. Next fall, I will call up Aaron, ask for your enrollment by grade, district level, by school. We do forecast evaluations for the first three years of the all forecast and track, see where we're right, where we're wrong, things like that. Also, in April of 21, or May, depending on the Census Bureau, your 2020 census results will come out. And when it gets us our once a decade opportunity to check our, our population models as well, do an eval on that too. We do this for all of our school districts, but your timing for, for the census is pretty good right now. So. No. This is the population forecast. This is the total in the bottom, you see male, female in total. Each, each one of your census areas is a district total. There's two ways to read this. Okay? You can look at like five to nine is your elementary enrollment. This is 2000, goes up to 2030. And you can see like elementary age over time, going up, leveling off, peaking about, about 3,500. Or follow cohort through time. Zero to four, five to nine, 10 to 14, 15 to 19, just follow cohort through time. The bottom is your median age. Okay? Which stays relatively flat, which makes you extraordinarily different than most school districts in the United States, where their mean ages are going through the roof. But the one reason for that is your constant turnover of, of college age and grad student populations, keeping your mean age artificially low. Births, these are, you call the components of change for the five year period, 10, 15, 15, 20, 25, 5, 25, 30. In that period, about 3,000 births. You know, the births are staying pretty steady, slight decline, not because so much of a drop in birth rate, but a slight decline within prime, prime child bearing age. The deaths, 21, 22, 23, 25, they go up slightly, not because there's a plague or anything. You've just got more people we call prime dying age. Which I used to define as people over the age of 60, but now that I'm 64, it's aimed at over the age of 80. Okay? Natural increase, excess of births over deaths, decline because of the increase in deaths. Despite what you've heard in the popular press, foreign immigration is not the backbone of US growth. In this country, for the last 250 years, it's been natural increase, more births than deaths. We're losing that. Two of your neighbors, Vermont and Rhode Island, just went ZPG. They have more deaths than births in the states now. So that's your de, de-demographic trend of the next 15 years. Net migration, this always.
Sorry, did you just, so, but I guess I heard you say that if there's a net demographic trend about lower fertility rates? And this looks like it's staying within 50 people. I'm just, are, are, are you saying that that is a real trend in the world and it is not a trend in Brookline? Or what?
Well, your, your fertility rate's dropping all right, but you're, you're.
I'm just looking across.
You're seeing a constant turnover of women in prime child bearing age. They're here, start their families, your resident fertility rate, but then they go someplace else. Okay? So your birth, because you always have this constant number of women between the ages of 20 and 34 years old and family formation ages, it doesn't change that much. It's a slight increase with your apartments coming in. So you're, you see pretty much flat, flat birth. Your actual fertility rate is probably dropping slightly over the next 15 years. And the reason why your fertility rate is so low is because you have a high proportion of women, both a, high education level and labor force participation. That's your two variables that correlate to the birth rates. So the higher the education level of women, the higher female participation rate, the lower the fertility rate. Areas where you don't have a lot of college graduates and a lot of them don't work, read Mississippi, you have much higher birth rates. Yes, ma'am?
At the risk of throwing more Brookline anecdotes at you. So obviously there's an, there's an anticipated increase in death rate, right? And that a lot of those people are currently living in no child houses, quite a few of which are large multifamily or single family units. There is anecdotally, and also sort of observed in some micro communities, like for example around Driscoll, that when people perish and their children sell their properties, those properties are converted into multifamily units. And they often are getting filled with multiple families. So a, you know, a single family house that is, you know, vacated can be converted into a four unit set of condos that will fill up with kids.
Or, or a four unit house that's, of course, it's a college student in there too. You have that too. Your, your talent actually tracks that pretty well, unless it's an illegal conversion. And that goes from owner occupied households to rental households. So we're going to track those numbers over time. So that's another reason why your rentals proportion is going up is because you do have existing home conversions into rental properties. So you're definitely going to have more people living in a rental conversion than you have in a single family attached home. So yeah, it's in there and it may or may not be, you know. So, yeah, it's in there, and it may or may not be, you know, people with, with school-age kids.
Are you picking up on that?
I just want to pick up on that. So, a couple thoughts. One is that we have a pretty large percentage, and I don't know if this is large relative to other people, but it's a large number, of single-family homes that are sitting on pieces of property that are zoned for two or three family homes.
Mm-hmm.
And so, and we're.
Tear down and rebuild.
Tear down, rebuild as two or three family homes, and those are sometimes going to rentals, a lot of times they're going to condos, and so, they are, what's happening is that it's, we're observing, and I'm trying to figure out if there's data to support this or not, what we're observing is that, as Sharon said, in May, it is a group of empty nesters, and by November, we have two or three units of condos.
Right.
With young families in them, attending the schools.
Right, okay.
So, I think we're trying to get a sense of whether that is, number one, how much more exposure do we have if, if more of those sort of convert, and, you know, because what it does, it creates more units on the same piece of property, and it creates them at lower price points, which are more friendly to a lot of the trends you were just saying.
Right, okay.
So I think that's what we're seeing, and we'd like just some more, more information.
Everything you're saying is right, okay? You do have that going on there, you have the anecdotal and all that. Let's keep it in perspective, and I'll throw this number at you. You've now got better than 25,000 households, okay, in here. So, yeah, if you convert 15, and I think that's been the max number in the last, at least four or five years in data I've seen, 15 existing units, and tear them down, and turn.
It's a rounding error.
Right.
Okay.
That's exactly the term I was going to use, too. Okay, thank you. All right, so, yeah, these things happen. In the whole scheme of things, we need to be talking hundreds and hundreds of households. Your, your example, Pudding Stone is actually closer to that, that's moved the needle a little bit, particularly in one attendance area if it comes on, and if they stay and they have, but it takes something to that magnitude to make it change. If you've got 15 housing units out there that have a whole bunch of people, you know, three generations move in, have eight kids apiece, yeah, it's there, people see it, it's real. You don't want to overgeneralize a fifth-level trend, okay? And say, well, like, how many people here have kids? How many of you live in the district? How many are going to have any more kids? There is your trend, okay? How many of you like living here?
No, but the parents who are going to have kids can't come, because they have the little ones.
Exactly, as long as, I always ask people, the three great questions, how many have kids? How many are going to have any more kids? How many are going to leave when your last kid graduates high school, okay? And almost no hands go up, you know? And that's where you see that aging process. I mean, you've got literally six, seven, eight, 900 homes a year that's going to be potentially turning over in the future. That's your real driver, okay? And if they're sitting there going, I'm sitting on a ton of equity, I bought it for 350, I can sell it for 1.3, I'm hitting the road, you know? But only if they can find people that afford to buy them, and the people who are buying them, I can guarantee you, will not have as many kids in their lifetime as they had, because there's another great rule in demography, you can have money, you can have kids, but you can't have both.
Helen, just, just, anyway, just before you ask your question, we have about five more minutes.
Five more minutes? Let me get to the meat of the issue there, okay? You know it's going to happen, okay? Someone's going to say, net migration, 120, 150, we had more people, yeah, you've got literally thousands of people moving into the school district every year, you've got thousands moving out, that whole churn factor, but it'd impact, but over the decade, the net increase of about, not even 300, you know, a little bit more in, in the future, but still low, so the change is relatively flat. You've got a lot of movement in your population, okay, in and out, you know, look at both sides of the equation, okay? The enrollment aspect, okay, and here's, the big key thing is what I call the cohort effect. The analogy I use is a bucket of water. If I've got a bucket of water, and I'm pouring water in the top, and there's a hole in the bottom, as long as I'm pouring in faster than running out, the bottom level will rise. But if for some reason, the hole in the bottom gets bigger, and it's going out faster than I'm pouring in, even if I keep pouring at the same rate, level will drop. Enrollment works the same way, okay? You'll notice here, I've got your first-grade enrollment pretty well flat, okay? You're going to hang on to and have enough immigration to keep 600 student cohorts, and you, by the way, you don't have 600 births a year in the, in the district, you know, pretty much constant. But why is your enrollment slowing down? Because instead of 440, 470 high school seniors graduating out, 510, 511, oh nine, 589, that's a big cohort going out. That's what's causing, the hole in the bottom's getting bigger, that's why you see that flat, that drop you had last year, you just had an abnormally small cohort coming in, a big cohort going out, okay? You'll notice in here also, district's enrollment this year, going up until 2025, boom, it drops 24. That's when the first, those big cohorts start going out, all right? So that's where you start leveling it, leveling it out. Even if you have all the growth, and more importantly, your housing turnover, the building and things like that, it should be enough to hold even. You're going to go up about 200 net, then flatten out, all right? Elementary, same trend. Now, here's the kicker, and I was actually outside the door, listening to your parents talk about the budget on the high school. You've got about a 200-student increase coming in your high school. They stopped building today, and they're still going to, 80% will show up. Why? Because they're already in the school district. You've just got some big cohorts coming in, and you can see the cutoff point here, okay, from the 600s, they're all 600s, those are aging in, and that's why you see that dramatic rise in your high school enrollment, going up to about 2,300, and then it stops, goes down 87 the next year. Why? Because you'll have your first 580-plus high school graduating class in what, 20, 25 years? It's been since you had that big? And when you have the big cohorts go up, it drops. There's another one coming out in '26, okay? So it depends on the size of cohorts going in, but then it's going to level off about 2,700, or, excuse me, 2,200, and then change, but you'll hit 23. They're already in the district.
I'm not understanding, so if you say, so let's pick that year that you were talking about of 2024. So you drop out a 589.
Mm-hmm.
But going in that year, you have a 633.
Dropping out 589, you're bringing in 514 the next year. Big cohort, small going out, big one going in, that change is 87.
But wouldn't you have then, if you go up to kindergarten, you have 628?
That's a different cohort. What he's assuming is that you're losing.
This is, this is 12, nine to 12, this is the district level right here. On that particular year, you got 589 going out, and 628 coming in, it drops, because of the big cohort going out, it drops 24. You've got outmigration in all, every year, in these, these grades here. So, but in the high school, it shows up almost, very much more dramatically, it's 87 out because of that big cohort going out, and a relatively small cohort going in.
So I think maybe one, maybe what we could do is to start on the, in 15, 16, pick a grade, I don't know, pick the second grade, and look at 621, and then 633, and then 621, and then 605, 582, 563, 555. So, I guess my question is, so I think what's happening, Julie, is that there's assumptions about not having the same number of high school.
Right.
Right.
Well, we didn't, like, that's where, I understand that you have a class that's 633, but, but for me, I see a class of six, let's.
Let's take the second grade and follow them, second grade in the first column, and follow them diagonally down.
Yeah.
He's assuming a lot of attrition.
Well, there happened, no, that's not assuming.
The green is, the green is existing, but then if you keep following it down, keep following it into the blue, is what I'm saying.
Right. This is your actual, this is forecasted.
Yeah.
And, and attrition's kind of a bad word to use on that, I would use outmigration.
But isn't it, it's churn, it's not necessarily outmigration, right?
It's people moving out someplace else, either back their home country, out to the suburbs, someplace, could be going to private.
The net outmigration.
Net, yeah, that migration, to go someplace else, out of the district.
Net.
Does it ever increase, though, too? It increases on those continuums, too, it doesn't just all go out.
The net effect is out.
It can increase and go.
The net effect is out. You always have people moving in, moving out, what's the net effect?
What's interesting is that this does show data that's different from, I mean, I'm just wondering if the last five years are different, because for, for many years, we were seeing, you know, 450 kinders come in, and 450 seniors go out, and yes, there's a lot of in-and-out migration, so there's churn, but net, it's more or less stable. And I think what this is showing that's different from what we've seen over the last decade, or I should say the prior, is that the numbers seem to be going down, as opposed to staying, the cohorts tend to be getting smaller over time, whereas I think what we've seen is lots of churn, but them staying net-steady over time.
Up until 2011, well, 12 or 13, you're right. After 2013, it's all but down. As the housing market's gotten better out in the different areas, they have more options out there now to move, okay? Now, to go back to your preschool question, which you asked originally, you've got 252, that's capped by space, funding, availability, things like that. If you had teachers, space, and funding for 600 preschool kids, you'd have 600 preschool kids in there, because that's roughly your cohort size. So that's, that's why we hold it constant, it's not any demographic change that's going to change that, it's going to be what's your resources. Yep.
I'd be curious if anybody from the demographics committee had anything to say, had any thoughts or questions or anything that they want to say, I'm just curious. Cliff or Nathan?
Yeah, I would, and Erin.
And Erin, too. No mics left.
So, yes, you know, we, we went through, and we, we had some of the same struggles that you did, you know, about a month ago, when we, when we sat down, and we had a, a pretty long meeting. You know, I think that since then, we've added at least one project. We still think that there are more projects to come in, and I think that, that, you know, Pudding Stone, the second part of, you know, the Jerry Road project down in Hancock Village, Waldo Durgan, we think are certain to, to move forward. I have to say that I'm a little bit confused by the statement that there's only going to be 25 kids coming out of the residents of South Brookline. The yield number on page 40 of the full report, which wasn't part of this slide deck, said .44 per unit out of 175, that, that gets me to about 70, just in my head, so, I, I think that there might be a little bit of a, a checking that we should do on that one, because I think that there might be, you know, quite a few more kids that are going to be coming out of that one. It would be helpful if the numbers, I think that was a good point by Dr. Abramowitz, that made, or, or Ms. Shawn Roldam, that the, that put in the actual number of kids at some time period, because, you know, Dr. McKibben is right, so, so, so there are going to be kids that come in, grow, leave, but if, if we can pick some, some point in time, either 2025 or 2029, and put them in the last column on page 42, I think that would be helpful for us to, to have, so that we can better interpret the report. The other question that I really do have with this report is that if you go back to page 15 of the report, you see the total population statistics, and those total population statistics for, for, for years five through nine, 10 through 14, and 15 through 19, track at a rate that's about 3%, 2% or 3% higher than the number of students that grow by 2029. That seems to be a little bit of a, of a disconnect for me, and that's, that's, I, I don't have an answer for that, but I just, I just saw that this morning, I, I popped that question over to Erin earlier today, but it was a little bit late to, to get that, that question answered today. Finally, I think that the, the last item that my toffle and I certainly were, were pretty concerned about, were, we just wanted to see some confidence intervals, maybe around the schools. I did do a, a little bit of a normal distribution analysis, assuming everybody was independent, which is probably not true, so that probably overstated the, the variances at the individual schools. I shared that with, with a few people, I'll share that a little bit more broadly with, with the committee. I don't think that those numbers are right, but it might give you a little bit more color for how a statistician might look at these, at these figures. I think Cliff might have a few other things that he might want to say.
So, I have maybe a slightly different take than Nathan or Mike might have, and it really goes back to information that the school saw back in 2017, I think, when the first population study was done, and the planning department took a look and charted housing units in Brookline relative to school population over a period of roughly 50 years, and essentially saw zero correlation. And I think that what I'm concerned about is the idea of adding in a particular project or two or three, and applying some sort of factor to the units, and then just assuming that it's purely additive to whatever is already in the projection. I think that we, it's a very dangerous thing to do. And so I, I do think it's worth asking or trying to understand, or maybe even requesting a scenario, even if it costs a little bit of money, that says, well, we know that Waldo Durgan is going to happen, okay? I think that that's a given, I think the planning department would say that. I think the planning department might say that, you know, someone like Chestnut Hill Realty, who is a long-term property owner, we know they're going to build things out, you can take a look, you could probably add Hancock Village at, at some level, over some period of time, but even when those units get built out, they're going to be built out over a period of time, and they're going to be occupied over a period of time, and kids are going to come in over a period of time. They're not all going to come in at once, and I just think that we have to be cautious with how we take a look at something like this and potentially modify it. I also am really personally very, very curious to see and understand what the MSBA is going to say. I know we went back and asked them to sharpen their pencil a little bit, but I think that's going to be a very interesting comparison for the folks at this table.
We have just a couple more questions, and then we are going to go to our next topic.
This looks good to me as far as it goes, but I happen to live near Coolidge Corner, and I see all of the other potentials there for huge developments that are not on the table yet, but that, that are proposed. Waldo, Waldo Durgan is one, there's one across the street at what used to be a lighting store, there's the one at the corner of Longwood and, what's the main street, Beacon? There's, there's, there's one there going up, or, or there's plans, and there's, there's talk about it going up. I think we are in for a lot more building in Coolidge Corner over the next 10 to 15 years than we have accounted for in here. These are plans that are not on the table, but are talked about in the community, so that's my only concern. I don't know how we get a handle on it, because you never know what is actually going to come through, but there's more talk about building than I've ever heard before. There's a big one going up on Babcock Street, near Freeman. It just, it never, it had, now that we are in this building piece, and 40Bs are a big issue, they just keep going up, and I think we will have to address them over the next 20 years.
Sharon?
So to hearken back to our earlier conversation, I just want to say I find this chart to be incredibly helpful as a reminder of the fact that we have a surge now that's right-hitting middle school, and we're talking about cutting forecasts to teaching hires. I think that we can actually be using this very constructively in thinking about our budgeting and our staffing planning for next budgeting and our staffing planning for next year. I'm not exactly sure... Like, I think, just to throw something out there on the table, it's worthwhile thinking about making sure that we retain those 10 positions that were funded by the override and thinking about what that looks like following these demographic trends, possibly even tying it in, you know, to staffing and curriculum on like a looping pattern, right? Like taking educators, possibly doing co-teaching, and, you know, moving them up grade by grade by grade with these kids as the demographics swell moves into the high school and then shifting resources into the high school. We could be planful about where all of these people are and making sure that they are actually being supported and trying to come up with creative ways to do that. So it's just something I wanted to put on the table for us to consider moving forward.
All right. Are there... Erin, maybe you can answer. What are the plans with going forward? You know, we've heard some, there have been some requests for information to be included, you know, a chart. We've heard about charts, perhaps other information about development projects. What's our plan for where we go from here?
Yeah. I mean, I think we'll have to kind of circle back and look at my notes, see all the questions that were identified by you and others, see what we can do internally ourselves. If we are requesting additional work from Dr. McKibben and his colleagues, obviously that will cost the town and the school some money. So we'll just have to, like, talk through those things with the interim superintendent and you all.
Just to be clear, you had mentioned, Dr. McKibben, that you come back and you look at certain information. Can you help me to know what the deliverable will be that we will...
When your official fall enrollment comes out, we'll ask Erin to send us the enrollment by grade for the district, total by school, and do what we call an evaluation and look at the error. Your confidence intervals, by the way, is plus or minus 2% at the district level, plus or minus 3% at the school level. Actually, if it's over a half percent first year out, I'm kind of shocked, you know?
The difference between what you're projecting and what we get?
And not only the error, but the distribution of that error, too, you know? What grades, what schools, you know, how does it violate the assumption? Because again, each school has its own population forecast model, what was the error. So, and...
So we'll get that next year and...
And 2021 also. And also in 2021, we'll do the population evaluation as well. So that's just a couple of Excel spreadsheets on each one. That's how we keep refining our methods. We go through different schools, see what's working, what doesn't, what assumptions are valid, which ones are not, need to be changed. We just changed the one on the 30-year fix. That was a very key one. We changed this here. So we keep track of them.
Suzanne has a question.
Yeah, I just had... There's so much work here. It's so extensive. But I take it that if we want this, that you didn't offer tools to our internal system. In other words, to get this again, we would need to rehire you. I mean, so I guess, is there anything in your method, methodology, that you were able to pass on to us that we can use in the future?
Nope.
Okay. I just, I wanted to be clear.
The reason for that is because it's a cohort component population forecasting models. Unless you've really got extensive training as a demographer, you really don't know how to use it. You can buy a canned model, but those are all, you know, like eight or 10 various different models you can just dump in there. We build ours specifically for you guys. One thing I do want to add, was not in the forecast, we'll kind of throw this in as a freebie, okay? We didn't look at race and ethnicity, but the one thing I can tell you for sure without lead pipe sense, the diversity of your student body is going to do nothing but increase in the next 10 years for a host of reasons, some unique to Brookline, but many not. So that's something you're going to have to address as most school districts in the country over the next 10 years. So that will be an additional factor you need to consider as well.
I can't believe, actually, we didn't talk any about it tonight, but something you said right in your closing remarks just made me wonder. You were saying that you'll come back in a year and give us the accuracy for next year.
No, no, I'll send her an email.
Oh, sure. No, I don't mean that to us. No, I mean, when we say, when I say "we," I mean a bigger "we." But my question is, is that it's not really the... Like, we know known births for the next year, so we know it's not as uncertain what's going to happen in the next five years, where a lot of the uncertainty comes in the years out from that. And so...
I'll respond to that with one of my favorite statistics. Almost half of all children start first grade in a different housing unit than they were born into. That's why we don't use birth to first grade because if you've hit it with that, you've been lucky. That means your migration. You've got a lot of migration, a lot of churn in here. So if it's even close, you've been lucky because almost, and particularly in this area, probably more than half of all kids start at school in different housing than they're born into. And if they just move across the district from one attendance area to the other, it's skewing it off. Also, the district births are district level. We do a fertility forecast for each area. We're forecasting birth per area. It's just different. And it's going to vary by birth rate. You have a wild range in birth rates between the parts of the district. The north is much, much lower than the south because of the college students and all that. So the birth decay correlation, birth to first grade correlation, is not really a valid measurement for population and enrollment change.
Wait, so it is accurate after five years, more than five years out, or you're saying it's not?
It's not, no. We've never used it because there's so much migration. As you get older, you tend to move less, but people with small children tend to have one of the highest mobility rates of all the populations in the United States. So even higher than unmarried singles.
What's not valid after five years? What is valid and what is not valid after five years?
Birth decay, birth to first grade is not valid.
So that's where I'm missing out.
These are off of, this is a district total. We do a population forecast for each area. So you're zero to four population. We look at the births, okay? That's where we get the births for each one of your attendance areas. This is all a summation of the elementary. They don't calculate one for Brookline. We calculated all the different areas and summed it up to Brookline. So we're looking at the number of births we calculated for each one of the attendance areas, okay? Then there's migration aspect to it. So that's why you've got, in this particular example, was it 3,020 births, but 3,140, that's in migration, okay, at the district level. It's going to vary each one of the elementary attendance areas. So it may or may not be the same ones. The what one? This one?
Yes.
At the district level, for the whole length of that, plus or minus 2%. That's a band.
Okay. I think we got just confused because you had started talking.
No, no, it's not cumulative. It's 2% plus or minus if the assumptions hold, okay? At the individual school level, for the total of the school, it's plus or minus 3%. That's a band, okay? Yeah, no, it's not. It's not cumulative, like 2% first year, four, six, eight, so it's like 20% at the end. No, it's a band.
I guess, how is it if you're going up to like kindergarten or... I understand for the high school because those kids are alive, they're there, you know? But for if you go to kindergarten and first grade, how as you go across that band, are you confident in the numbers not using birth rate analysis? Yes, I'm talking about 2025 kindergarten out.
Right.
Where do those numbers come from?
Those are all from our birth calculations based on how many women in prime childbearing age and your age-specific birth rate, okay? And we have one for each one of the attendance areas. So we'll take the number of women we have estimated between, actually between 15 and 44 in the area, apply the birth rates to that population, and that's what the results are, sum it up to the district level.
If the kids are not sitting in the same households and they're moving around, presumably, as you said earlier, they're bringing their parents, they're bringing adults with them. How are you making, how do you make assumptions based on women of birth age and what they will be doing in eight years from now?
There's three steps to it, okay? And that's what we do by five-year cohorts, okay? You have the five-year age-specific migration by a five-year cohort. You have the mortality for the five-year cohort. Then you have the fertility rate for 15, 19, up to 40, 44. That's what you start with, say, for 2020. First thing you do is you allow migration, then you do death, then you do births, okay? So first, you put the migration in there. What's the population going to change in each one of those five-year age groups over a five-year period of time? Then you apply mortality, which of course affects the elderly more than affects people in their 20s. What's left in that area, then you apply for the females, the age-specific birth rate. So if they're still there and they're still alive, they're allowed to have births at the rate they have in that district. Now, if you get up to Coolidge Corner for the 20 to 24-year-olds, the birth rate's like .04, it's almost miniscule because they're mostly college students. Unless they're living in non-college households, they're not going to have any kids. You get down to Baker, okay, where there's not many college students, they may be starting family formation, or 25, 29, definitely by that point, have a higher fertility rate, probably .08, .09 by that point, you start seeing births if they're there with age them forward five years. Now, when the new houses are being built or they're moving into existing family homes, we'll see what their ages are. That's where the house price comes in real handy. Not a lot of 25, 29-year-olds buy $800,000 homes. That's mostly going to be in their late 30s. Problem is, by late 30s, despite the aging of people having first birth, 35 to 39 fertility is still far, far less than 25, 29, okay? So it's going to depend on that age structure and what the births are going to be. So that's how we get your number of births by area, depending on age structure, housing tenure, individual fertility rate, things like that. So, and I cited in the report, I don't have it on top of my head, but your resident fertility rate is actually very low because you have a lot of women in prime childbearing age, but they're not having kids because they're college students or grad students or young professionals or whatever.
Last question.
You said, if I recall correctly, this will be accurate if the conditions hold.
Right. That is very true.
But if we get a huge number of 40Bs up the street and so on, because they're not yet ready to be even listed at the town, then we've got another problem. And it seems to me that that's one thing we need to keep our eyes on, what is happening out there with housing that we were not considering at this point?
I'll give you two other scenarios. 30-year fixed mortgage rate goes at 6%. Now, it might kill your existing home sales. I mentioned earlier that those people who are in the apartments and want to move to the suburbs aren't going to get a, won't get a mortgage. They're going to stay put. So you will see those middle school, high school yields. Forget about building anything new. That wave of, you won't see attrition, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, like that. That would be almost immediate. Or conversely, some entity in Washington decides to declare a trade war on everybody and ruins the economy, and we go into a deep recession. That will have an impact also. I think, but your housing points will take it. But I think there's a lot of factors out there that's going to be a factor, you know, and not only number but price. If they build, and if they're 40Bs, that's one thing, you know? But if they're aimed towards college students, they're upscale young professionals, that holds, how many are going to be one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom? Forget the, you know, four generations of one-bedroom, which I'm sure happens but are very, very rare. It's the number of two and three-bedrooms. And the other thing, I'm telling all my clients here, you've got a dire shortage, like everybody else in New England, Massachusetts, all across the country, of elder housing. There's a lot of people who would like to downsize and stay in Brookline because they like living here, but there's no place for them to go. And that's a chronic shortage all over this state, nation, region. And so if they dropped in some affordable, downsizable elder housing that will allow those young people or those elderly to move out and stay in that town they like living in, you'd sit at 110 existing homes per year, you might get 220, 230, and that would have a big impact as well. So you're right, there's a myriad of issues that could change. I tell people, I'm a demographer, I'm not a soothsayer. If I could actually see the future, I wouldn't be doing this for a living, you know? So I would have been tired of my bond market killings.
So when you do this, you do look at like back 30 years and use your system to predict and to see if it's correct?
Not 30. That's too far back. And it's, you know, 30 years ago is as valid as 100 years ago. The last 15, maybe. What we do is we correlate trends and basically what you're building done, what's your economy done, what's your age structure. All those people in the 60s now probably moved out here 20 years ago, you know? So there, it's where they are in the life course. That's why I think the 2020 census results are really going to be important to tell us how your age distribution's changed, you know? That'll kill a lot of the anecdotal stuff. I have to go. I've got a 5:30 flight. I got to do this in Indianapolis tomorrow night again, so another school district. So my apologies.
Thank you.
I might get four hours of sleep tonight, so...
We might still be here, so...
Lucky you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have a presentation and a possible vote on the Brookline High School course catalog. Dr. Gittens and Ms. Scotta?
The first one I want to mention is the Whipple Writing Fellowship for Brookline High School students. This is a fellowship given by the Whipple Gladstone family in memory of their son David. And David, unfortunately, is no longer alive, and this is, was a very happy student at Brookline. So the Whipple family set up this fellowship, which is a writing fellowship for students who are intrigued with the idea of writing. It's not about learning to write. It's using what, at this point in time, you feel you want to pursue as a high school student. And it will take place over the summer. There will be stipends for the students. They will meet weekly. And it seems to be a very exciting program because it's not directed in a particular way. You're interested in science writing or writing historical novels or writing essays, anything that you, even writing a cookbook, anything that you are interested in. It will give you the time and the meeting with the fellows in your cohort to explore this further. It will be probably something that will go on for three or four years, five years, depending on how long it lasts. Not foresee, I mean, each year will be a different group. I don't mean it's the same people. But it sounds like a very exciting idea, and the people on the, at the, on the curriculum committee were very happy with it. Nicole, do you have anything else to add with that?
Yes, just to add that the Whipple Fellowship will be coming before Finance Subcommittee to accept the funds, and we hope that that goes very smoothly and quickly. to accept the funds, and we hope that that goes very smoothly and quickly, so that they can begin recruiting for their program.
Is there, is there a cost to the district for this course, or this is covered by the?
No, this will be covered by the, the foundation funds completely.
Well, the only question that I had is, it was a pretty extensive conversation, and I think there were six of us there, and so I guess my only question is, if we don't feel like it needs to go through Finance, we don't have another Finance meeting until March, I think, and so I just wonder if they need planning time to get it going this summer, I would just ask the committee, does it need to go to Finance? Or because so many of us were there, I guess I'm sort of asking my Finance committee members also.
Were there, and enthusiastic about it?
Yeah, everyone was very enthusiastic about it, and there aren't costs incurred by the district. So if people want to hear it, we'll hear it, I just want to make sure of that, as opposed to just checking a box.
I move that we accept it and that we accept the monies and accept the course.
We have a vote docket, but.
We do.
We do?
We do, for the acceptance of the course, not.
Oh, for the acceptance of the course catalogs, not for the fellowship.
Marianne. Roman is coming up.
We're meeting next week, but we're not meeting in Finance for quite some time.
But why can't we just do it both at once and get it done with?
So the committee needs to accept the funds, there's some, I'm just getting the final terms around how the funds, what the requirements are around the funds, if there are any, so I would like to make sure that when the committee votes to accept those funds, that A, is it, they're all on the terms that you believe, and you're, and, and the other part is, I have to look, or whether the committee, sometimes every once in a while, the committee gets to accept a fund, and then the, because it's a single source, you don't have to accept the funds annually, so once you accept the fund, as funds come in, that fund exists. So I just want to find that piece out, so that those, annually, those funds don't have to be accepted every year, if they don't have to be, but shows up in the budget document.
I amend my proposal, which is that, can we put it on the docket for the 13th, either in the consent agenda, if it's all the way we think it's going to go?
All normal, yeah.
Or as a separate vote, if there are things that you want us to talk about? It just doesn't seem to me that they need to wait until March.
No, they're, no.
Unless, unless they're, unless it is very complicated and.
Unless something gets, yes, if, if something's complicated, but if it's, as I've described, should committee meeting happen?
I just have a question about the fellowship. Do students get high school credit for that, class credit, course credit? No. I'm, I'm just, okay.
I think, you know, you can apply for, you know, independent study type things, I suppose, if kids wanted to and needed it, but my sense is probably the kids who are taking this won't need the credits from this. And it's really for, it's not really to teach the students anything, it's to encourage them in their writing and, and to help them learn through actually doing and talking about it and discussing with one another.
Okay, did you want to take separate votes on these, or do you want to go ahead? Why don't we do that? Did you want to take a vote on this one?
We can take one on the right now, as a separate.
For the course catalog?
For the, for the, for the writing fellowship, can we vote on the school committee, or do we have to have the finance first?
We can vote for the acceptance.
Let's just do the course catalog.
Course catalog.
Okay. Well, this is in the course.
You're voting, so Ms. Cotto, you're making a motion then to add this course to the course catalog?
I'm making a motion to add the Global Studies to the course catalog. And the Global Studies is a course that will be a 10th grade course. They started last year to have non-leveled history courses, and it, the, the one in ninth grade has been very successful. Hal Mason would like to continue this in 10th grade in the same way. 10th grade is a modern, much more modern world history course, and he would like to work with teachers to create something very similar, I think, to what is being done in ninth grade, where it will focus around certain issues, it won't be a memorize your fact, memorize certain facts kind of course. And it, he was talking about the fact that very often you have students who possibly might be not necessarily taking honors courses, but who are very, very good at discussing and thinking, while they may not be terribly good at other things. And this kind of course, they can take at the level they're comfortable with, but will have an opportunity to interact and talk to students from all different levels. And as a former teacher, I think that's a really important thing. I have taught brilliant students who had difficulty with reading and writing, but in terms of discussing a story or an event with the group, they could be very, very engaged. And this is a, this, use, having an option for this course for students, I think, will be good to continue what they started in ninth grade.
Does the addition of this class take away another class, or what resources would be shifted?
I don't.
So this course actually mirrors the American Studies course at 11th grade, which is a multi-level course, so you can take, take it for standard credit or honors credit. There are approximately, there'll be 25 world history cour, global 10th grade social studies courses, and these, there will be about five sections of this new course offered. So it won't be wholesale change like the ninth grade course is for this year. Next year, there will be five sections offered by two teachers who will kind of plan and work together on this, and the rest of the classes will be traditional world history courses.
There was some additional stipend to time that Dr. Schiffman and Mr. Meyer, Mr. Mason seemed to be negotiating quietly in the back of the room, but yes, there, so I think they, I, I, it did not seem to me that there was an additional request, that they were going to somehow find that stipend to time.
Yeah, typically, every year, we have funds in my office that go to teachers to plan and build courses or revamp courses, and so that'll, that will happen as part of this typical summer work.